Good evening. This particular loan that I've asked the mayor to submit to the council is based upon the need to update our iteration system at the wastewater plant as well as the primary and secondary clarifiers. Primary clarifier, actually, since we've submitted this, has had an issue with one of the arms, so to speak, actually breaking and having to be welded. So these have become a little bit more of a priority than it was originally when we applied. This particular section of the treatment plant upgrade is the last phase of the major portions of the plant that were upgraded in 1983. Everything else we've worked on has been upgraded. We've been looking at not only technological upgrades but operational upgrades, reducing energy consumption, and making it more efficient overall. What I handed to each one of you is the letter to the mayor from the Clean Water Trust. And in that, it talks about a principal loan forgiveness of $745,000. Now, that forgiveness is based upon the community profile, demographics. So as you can see, the estimated overall savings with repayment of just that amount is two and a half million dollars. The key to this particular application is going to be whether or not we can get the 0% for nutrient removal. And that's what we're looking to do. We get this approved, we submit this to the state, and have them evaluate it for the nutrient removal component, which will give us a 0% interest rate rather than the standard 2% interest rate. So that's really the quick overview of this particular project. I think it's important to note that this will be the final phase of the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. Everything in the process building has been upgraded. Everything in the exterior, the generators, and some of the process buildings that we had to build going back eight or 10 years will finish this project off. Now, one of the questions that I've been asked by a number of people is, how do we pay for this? And one of the things that I think we need to look at is the amount of loan repayment that is going to be final this year. So if we did a 2% loan on $10 million, you're going to look at approximately 49 cents of a rate increase with a debt service of $700,000. Now, we take the loans that are matured, and you reduce that 700 by 300,000, so now you're only going to be borrowing net cost $400,000. So that $400,000 keeps the increase below 30 cents. That's if it's 2%. If we hit the 0% loan, you back out another 14 cents. So now you're only talking between 15 and 20 cents. So this becomes a really cost-effective method to upgrade, basically, the last key critical piece of the wastewater treatment plant. These functions have been operational for 35 years. We think the nutrient component is one that we want to emphasize because it reduces phosphorus loadings in the Nashua River. Our phosphorus removal after the upgrades that we've done has been excellent. But I think this would add another piece to that and complete the entire upgrade of the facility. So with that, if anybody has a question, I'm happy to answer anything.
Roger, the pro forma they gave us in terms of a 2% rate rather than a market interest rate loan at 3.15 is based on a 20-year payout. Is that what we're also, is that what we'd be doing too, is a 20-year payout?
Correct. Right. SRF allows you to do 20 or 30 years. There's absolutely no reason to do a 30-year. You're just paying longer money for something that we should be able to handle for a 20-year period.
If, in fact, we were successful in getting the 0% rate, would that change the length of this term?
No.
No, still be a 20-year payout?
Right.
And you estimate that the effect on the rates based on maturing obligations would be somewhere about 15 cents?
If you get the 2%, so if you look at it like you had 49 cents with the 700,000, and then if you apply 300, now you're down to 400 in total debt service with a 2% loan, all right? So you're only going to have to come up with a difference of, at that point, 28 cents. Now, if you get the 2% off of that, that's going to be another 14 cents. So you should be right around 15 cents as far as an adjustment if you get the 0% treatment, which is, when you're looking at it from a ratepayer standpoint, this is the most cost-effective way to do this. It's an item, it's a critical component in the wastewater treatment process, but it's also a way to do this without a lot of...
Ratepayer pain?
Well, not only that. You've basically got a situation here where we've staggered the debt service over a number of years. So if you look at some of the debt that the city has incurred over the years, we've been able to stretch it out so there's no one year when you're getting really crushed. So after these have been paid, you've got a number of these that have stretched out to like 2030, 2032. So we try to spread it out every five to six years if you can. And that way, as one matures, you can look at doing another major capital upgrade without a major impact on the ratepayer.
In terms of priority, this isn't something that can wait a long time, right?
No. Realistically, this needs to be done. I mean, we're really on borrowed time on anything that's been there 30 years. I mean, you can't get replacement parts for a lot of the motors, pumps, that type of thing.
Do any members of the Finance Committee have any questions of Roger? Councilor Cormier?
Roger, what's the turnaround time? When can we expect to have any answer?
We need, okay, so after we have, subject to this being approved, after we do that, you have to go to bond council, and we put together a package. David LaPlante does that with me. And we have to have everything into DEP by October. So that's what they look at as a timeframe. But through the summer, it's tough to get everybody going in the same direction.
Councilor David Cormier?
Thank you.
Any other members of the council generally have any questions relative to Roger's presentation? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for...
Thanks, Roger.
This is a public hearing. C-110, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that $129,900,000 be appropriated to the general fund budget as listed in the attached budget. The same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. This was given regular course at our meeting on June 10th, signed to the Finance Committee, scheduled for a public hearing this evening at 6:15. I'm going to first open it to members of the public and invite them, if they're so inclined, to make some dignified and non-repetitive, I hope, comments relative to the budget.
Go ahead. He looked at you when he said dignified.
I know, I talked. That's when I sure came up.
You better go up first.
I would be disappointed if Gary didn't join us for this.
My yearly visit now. Gary Zimmerman, 47, Lynnhaven Road, Leominster. I was going to be neutral this year, but when I saw the budget and it was going to have an increase, now I'm against the budget because now we have another increase of $5 million. Again, we're here in the 11th hour, you have the budget. I'm assuming we'll hear the same thing we have heard for 10 years. We are financially sound, and the city is in good shape. It's so close to July 1st, we won't vote down the budget once again. Leominster is financially sound. Good job, Dean. I told you I'd say good job on the finance. Yes. But with this budget, the city will have $30 million more in the budget from 10 years ago. Who wouldn't be financially sound in this case? We are hearing we're saving the taxpayers money by doing this or doing that. But hearing that, the bottom line is our taxes are on the edge of tripling from over 10 years ago. It isn't financially sound to me if you're not trying to cut some things or figure ways to save money, no matter how small it might be. Some things are beyond the city, but our politicians should be working on fixing the things and stop throwing money at things. Before I get into my numbers, I will not be mentioning names. This has nothing to do with the people in any positions. I will just stating some numbers that I find interesting, but again, has nothing to do with the people in the positions. We have great people at work in the school system and in the city. So let's start with the pension liability fund, and great job funding that, Dean. It was announced that millions were saved, but I look at it, we shouldn't even have been in that position in the first place. But I know that's up at the state level. But it should be fixed because it's just going to get worse. OPEB is another one. Taxpayers keep putting funds in there, and I look at it, it's not financially responsible. Our government should be fixing all these issues instead of the taxpayer bailing them out all the time. So let's look at some of the numbers I found. Leominster spends $15 million a year on retirement in the school department alone. Of the 15 million, 12.8 million is teachers. One person in the retirement system is making $87,000 a year in retirement. Let me repeat that. $87,000 a year in retirement. The total number of people retired is 345, so the average retirement pay is about $43,000 a year. 304 of the 345 retirees are teachers making a retirement, more than triple the average of a pension person on Social Security. Just to note, when I mention other pay, it could be stipends, overtime, and shift differential. In 2017, $2.4 million was spent in early retirement healthcare. That's early retirement. That's not anyone on Social Security or anything like that. This is people retiring early. We have to, by law, support after 10 years their healthcare. That money can go a long way in the city. So some of the numbers that stood out in the FY '18 salaries that I got. Base custodian pay was $978,000, but an other pay was $326,000. Some other salaries that we're seeing, substitutes, I thought one number was about $800,000 we pay in substitutes. I had, and I do a search in Excel for the word "sub," $554,000. In aides, we spend $2.6 million. Sped, $3.3 million. ABA, not sure what that is, but I sort of know, $1.4 million. The other total that's paid out into the school department is $2.2 million. Other people make, in other pay, making more than $5,000, there's 124 employees. Other pay, more than 10 grand, is 36. Some of these other key numbers, the previous superintendent had $41,000 in other pay. That would raise a flag to me. There's a teacher made $52,000, and there was $27,000 in other pay. A custodian was making $61,000, other pay, $36,000. There's a consultant, and I think I brought that up to the school department a couple years ago, $81,000 a year, but $22,000 in extra other pay. Then I have three custodians, $22,000 in other pay, $21,000 in other pay, $18,000 in other pay. There's a librarian, librarian, media aide with other pay of $13,000. These all add up. I don't know what they are, but they would raise flags to me, and it's taxpayer dollars. So let's move on to the fire department. For years, we've talked about the ambulance, and you never know if it's profitable or not. And this has been going on for years. If I was in the city, I would have different light items for each thing so you would know, is it profitable or is it not? But we don't track it completely. I have full respect for the firefighters, and it's a tough job within the fire. I have no arguments with that. But again, there's a lot of money spent in taxpayers' dollars that we have to cover, school, police, fire, the city. So last year, the fire chief came down, and I'd have some follow-up questions with him on, you know, how many fires are there in a year? When the fire chief says they get over 4,000 calls, do you ask how many of them are false alarms? If four vehicles show up at a call, does that count as four? With the ambulance, how many actually get transported out of all the transports? How many actually do you get paid for? Because I had to pay out of my pocket for my daughter to go, and I would live it. How often is each fire station idle? Nothing going on? How many calls between midnight and 6:00? Is that all looked at? Because there's a lot of money put in the overtime in the fire department. So depending on these questions, do all the stations have to be open seven by 24? So some of the pay for the city, the total other pay in the city is $6.2 million. That's not the base pay, again, it's other pay. Police other total is $2.1 million, but that's hard to tell because they get paid for details from the workers. Police department making more than 180K is 35 people. So in the fire department, other pay is $2.6 million. Number of firefighters with other pay more than 25,000, 52. Number of firefighters with other more than 35K is 32. The fire department total pay making more than $100,000 is 38. Fire department making more than 80K is 70. The wire inspector, $55,000 in overtime for a total pay of $140,000. Top policeman, and this is kind of interesting, the base pay is $76,000. The other pay is $99,000. How could that be? Can't figure that one out. Almost like he had to work seven by 24 for 365 days a year to get $99,000 in other pay. Labor in the DPW had $31,000 in other pay. Water department, someone had $24,000 in other pay. There's a firefighter with no base pay but $82,000 with other pay. So just, again, just raises flags. Librarian, there was $18,000 in other pay. Can't figure that out. Out of 88 people in the citywide making over 90K a year, 17 are police officers and 54 are firefighters. I won't get into their pay. So some of the things I've kind of came up with to save money, maybe, or look at, when we put people on paid leave, I don't, I cannot understand that. Maybe they should be put on leave, and then if they're not guilty, you pay them. When the streetlights went on, the new streetlights, we didn't audit them. We just put them up and replaced them. I know from Litchfield to Lowe's, I saw 10 of them that, to me, didn't even have to be put back up. They don't need to be lit. Either the buildings have been built up, or it's a straightaway. But again, I look at that, could be saving thousands of dollars. When the streets are done over, do we really need sidewalks on both sides? Just because they're there doesn't mean we have to leave them there. How much does that save not doing the sidewalk, putting trees on the side that doesn't have the sidewalk instead of on this little patch? I brought up this a couple of years ago, raising the meters downtown instead of a nickel and a dime, you know? And it's not consistent. Go to the post office, you don't have to pay anything. You come in front of City Hall to pay your taxes, you got to pay a nickel or a dime. It just doesn't make sense. It should be more consistent. Even with snow removal, I never realized, I was looking at the GIS database, behind ABM and behind Allens, they own that parking lot, but we plow it and we sand it. Do they pay any extra taxes compared to me? They don't come do my driveway. And again, these are just things to look at. These are things I've noticed or seen or looked into. The mart buses, I don't know if we pay for anything for the mart buses, but half the time, they're empty. Maybe five people or less are on them every time I see the mart buses, and I drive around town a lot. If we pay anything, and this is where we get into we're a coddling society, why don't we only do that five days a week? Let them try to find transportation two days instead of doing it every day? Or go to a smaller vehicle if the bus is half-empty half the time? Again, little things that could save money. Businesses only account for 20% of the taxes, but they seem to get all the tax breaks and benefits. But the residents pay 80%, and they just get taken more out of their pocket. Given AIS, $900,000 tax break in five years. The building was already there, we should have been collecting the taxes anyway. People shouldn't be taking their vehicle home. This has always been a little pet peeve of mine. We have someone taking a vehicle pretty far away. Let them drive their own vehicle, bring it back. That could save at least, I guess, $8,000 in gas, never mind wear and tear the vehicle. And the person just got a brand-new vehicle, I think, that I heard costs about $70,000. City councilors, you are elected by the taxpayers. So look back at the last 10 years, what you've done about the budget over the last 10 years, or what you can even do about the budget. This is the time to say enough is enough. Go with the 1/12th. Not your fault. You get the budget in the 11th hour every year. Natalie Higgins, if she's our rep, she should be fighting to fix some of these problems that we don't have to, the taxpayers have to fund, like OPEB, early retirement healthcare. I know it'd be a battle. It's going to affect more of our kids than it's going to affect us. I wish I had time to look over the budget in more detail, but I would be up here talking longer. As we know, if this was a business, it would be out of business. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any other member of the public wish to address the council relative to the budget? I'll ask again. Any member of the public wish to address the city council relative to the budget, the general budget? Third and final time, any member of the public? Yes, Mayor?
Dean Mazzarella, Mayor for the city. It's probably helpful just to sort of go over the budget process. And so the budget process starts with department heads throughout the city, and there are roughly 18 boards, commissions, departments, school, and within the school department, and many different departments. Those budgets, they sit down and they go through them the best they can. They prioritize those budgets. But they have budget requests because when they're working on those budgets, they don't have an estimate as to what the city's revenues might be, our new growth, a two and a half increase in taxes. And remember, City of Leominster and all communities in the state of Massachusetts are under the auspices, under the law, of Prop. 2.5, which means that our budget is limited to the 2.5 without some sort of an override or a debt exclusion. In the City of Leominster, we have, and I hope somebody will explain tonight, I won't go into great detail, but we have excess levy capacity, meaning most communities go up to 2.5% every year. The City of Leominster didn't. So we have excess levy capacity that could be used if we needed it to. We've never done an override, we've never done a debt exclusion. So the budgets will come, and when they arrive, they're most of the time prioritized, but they are most of the time, all budgets have more in request than we have funds to pay for those requests. But a lot of time is spent in prioritizing those because the budget, for me, is a story about, you know, the other departments, their department. Along with that budget will come data. And I think it was just explained, you know, sort of looking at the data and what does it all mean? So take the city electrician, $55,000 in overtime. Believe me, we call these people in 24/7, holidays, weekends, whenever. Think about what it costs to hire an electrician today. They're part of a union. Just to hire that person is going to be well over $55,000, and that doesn't even count the benefits. So you're well over $100,000 a year just to pay for that one position. So the City of Leominster has utilized, and other communities across the state have sort of followed along and said, let's use overtime... of followed along and said, let's use overtime where we can use overtime. Because there is that tipping point where it is a huge savings from using overtime. So when you look at somebody's salary, it may look like it's more than what you think it might be, but let me tell you, from that comes a lot of forced overtime. Means somebody worked, they were getting ready to go home, and we told them they had to stay because somebody was out sick or injured or whatever it might be. That wasn't something they signed up for that particular day. In most cases, it's overtime that people have been forced to, to work. And so we take those budgets, obviously, and we look at what our anticipated revenues are, and we sort of project out. We project out for the future. And one of the things that we've looked at is just, just storm water management. We look at what's happening with this climate change, and it is having an effect on us. One need only look at the landfill where we've had a serious washout there because of the amount of water that's coming in. And so we look at those things, and we look in the future and see where we are. And then we look at what's happening in the economy. I'm an optimist, but I've also been here enough times to be in the middle of recessions and the worst recession since the Great Depression. People start buying automobiles, people slow down on purchases, people do less additions on their homes, and eventually that tipping point happens and it begins to go the other way. Hopefully, it, when it goes sort of the other way, it, it slows down. And so we anticipate those sorts of things when we're doing our budget. We look at, you know, potential retirements down the road, and again, it's a whole system that we look at, and then we present the budget to the city council. So we are anticipating sort of what might happen in the budget, if there are new positions this year, for instance. We had two positions at the police department. We were lucky enough, and we worked hard to get collaboratively. We worked hard to get for domestic violence liaison as well as a liaison that does drug addiction and other addictions. That was then funded by the state for a second year on a grant level, but that ran out this year, and we didn't have it. Police department says that was a high priority for them. But I have to tell you, there are many positions that are missing in all departments in the city. And I think somebody said to me the other day that the only department that, you know, that didn't get everything they requested was the school department. That's simply incorrect, and maybe that's sort of not reported that way, but every department didn't get the, certainly the staffing levels that, that they need. In police department, we've gone many years without a, a captain, and there are positions in the police in every department within the city, and we just have to leave those open because we just don't have the, the funds to pay for them. So anyway, once that budget happens, we bring it to the city council. I think it speaks for itself in every department. It tells a story. Our population is, is probably going to increase in the city when we do our census for the next year, and, and again, in anticipation of that, what does that all mean for us? The school population is pretty much leveled, but I think when you look at the census, Caitlin will tell you, it's gone up quite a bit. So maybe the school population stayed the same, but the actual census of the city has gone up substantially, and we think we're probably pushing forty-eight or so thousand people in the city. So that's substantial, and we have to look at those services that we provide here in the city and how to best and most economically and efficiently do that. And so sometimes it may look like, you know, the overtime budget is huge, but go out and hire all of those employees and see what that does to your, your annual budget. So that is the budget that you have before you tonight. We have all the city departments here. School department showed up. There is a number of principals that are here and other staff members, and we're here for the rest of the night to answer your questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'll ask the members of the public, if anybody has a comment relative to the budget, please step to the podium. Second time. Third and final time, any members of the council wish to be heard relative to the budget? Seeing none, Mr. President, I will close the public hearing on the budget.
Thank you.
It is past six sixteen, I'm, I'm confident. So that brings up C-111, D.J. Masarella, mayor, requested a total of five million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents be made to the fiscal year 2020 water department budget. The same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year 2020 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E. Do any members of the public wish to be heard relative to C-111? A second time, any member of the public wish to be heard relative to C-111? In a third and final time, any member of the public wish to be heard relative to C-111? None, none seen? I'll open it up to the council in general. Does any member of the council wish to be heard relative to C-111? Seeing none, Mr. President, I would ask that the public hearing on C-111 be closed.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to C-112. Dean J. Masarella, mayor, requested a total appropriation of five million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents be made to the fiscal year 2020 sewer department budget. The same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year 2020 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E. Does any member of the public wish to be heard relative to C-112? A second time, does any member of the public wish to be heard relative to C-112? In a third and final time, does any member of the public wish to be heard relative to C-112? None being seen? I'll open it up to the council in general. Does any member of the council wish to be heard relative to C-112? Seeing none, Mr. President, I'd ask that the public hearing on C-112 be closed.
We're now going to begin a informational meeting on the budget. Mrs., Mrs. Racine, please join us. Thank you for coming down this evening. You have the floor.
Hello.
Hello.
Um.
Want me to come in?
Sure.
Gil, you can run it from here.
Do you want me to? Okay. Okay, Ellen.
Hi.
I'll help you out here.
Sure.
How are you?
Fine. How are you?
Good. All right. Nice to see you as always. Okay, so Ellen, if you could just give us a little bit of information regarding the CDGB, which is Community Development Block Rant, right?
Yep.
And we have the action plan in front of us, July first, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. The total is four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. The total public services is sixty-seven, eight hundred. So I think a little history about the Block Rant. Information regarding the planning, administration costs, code enforcement, economic development, small business, housing rehab, what the one oh eight loan is, public services application process, did everybody get what they wanted or mostly what they wanted? And then let's come up with the totals so that the public knows how this money is being spent and how it's benefiting the city.
Okay.
So the city gets money. We're in an entitlement community, which means that the federal government directs the money directly to us, so it's, it's an automatic. In other communities, they're not entitlement communities, so the money goes to the state and then they apply through the state. But we're in an entitlement community, the money comes directly to the city. There are certain categories that we have to stay within and remain in, and if you get outside of that category and the percentage is, is too high, then that's a problem. So we break it down by planning and administration and code enforcement, economic developer. One of the things that's, years ago, we didn't have the, we badly needed an economic developer. We didn't have the funds for him, that person, so we ended up taking that and applied it to the CDBG program. It wasn't something they were real excited about, but they understood we were trying our hardest to get the city back and turn it around, and especially for those that are low or moderate in those areas, in those businesses that were hiring low or moderate income people and families. So we did hire them this year. A couple of years ago, we took one position out, and then this year, in this year's budget, that has been taken out and put into the city budget. And there's a lot of oversight and scrutiny for these positions, and so they're out now. The CDBG program has changed somewhat. We do a lot of work. We tailored our efforts towards elderly, disabled, and veterans, and we did that a number of years ago. And that's the first priority for us. It's worked out well. So we spend a lot of the funding on things like roofs, and roofs aren't two thousand dollars anymore. They're very expensive. So it could be families that are in the, the trailer park at five fifty-six Central Street. We do a lot of that, weatherization, windows, that sort of thing. So we, we really have gone that way. Opposed to Council Marsh, and you remember, it used to be fifty, sixty thousand dollars for one house. We, we just don't have the funds for that anymore, and there is a need for oil tank replacements, boiler replacements, those sorts of things are really what's driving the, the program right now. On, on the programming for, on the second page, this is this year?
Yeah.
So on the second page of the proposal, and again, these numbers could change, the funding has gone down this year. How much was it? Thirty something?
It went down three thousand one hundred dollars.
Three thousand, okay. So you see in public services, we're limited as to how much we can spend, so we still have some moving around to go to, but they go to places like the Beacon of Hope, the Recreation Department Summer Program to offset the cost for those families that might have two and three kids that can't afford some of these programs. Our Energy Assistance Program, our Summer Youth Program that we hire every year, we've done this for probably thirty years in the city. The State Pool, there are families that show up first thing in the morning, they're there all day until we close, and once you get two or three kids in a family, it becomes a little bit of a struggle, so we try to offset the cost of that. Monarch's at Home Care Financial Program, where mostly helps the elderly with financial, sort of, not just financial planning, but just every day, watch out for scammers and money management, you know, that sort of thing. Monarch's in Interfaith Hospitality. It's the only group that takes on homeless families. We can't find anybody else that does. Spanish-American Center Crossroads Program, the Spanish-American Center Referral and Advocacy Program, Allen Crest Learning Center, the YMCA Violence Prevention Education, YMCA Working on Wellness, and Growing Places Pop-Up Market, where they try to bring nutritional things to those neighborhoods, particularly aimed towards low or moderate income. So that's pretty much it. I mean, it's, you know, the, the funds keep dropping every year. We used to get a substantial, we, we used to get increases, and then we reached that certain point where they started to go the other way. So that's our total appropriation for, for this year. I think, what was the highest we've ever gotten that you can remember?
Eight hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, so it's like half, it's like half that we get now. So we really have to make sure we make good use of this. We've changed it around a little bit. We've, we do a public sort of needs assessment where we'll open it up to the public, they can come in, and we get a sense of where some of the needs are. Have, have they changed? There is more need for one thing, maybe less need for another, based on the, you know, the economy might, might change things. And, and so after that, there are a group of people, volunteers, that sit on the committee that will make recommendations to myself, and then in the end, we put the budget together. But at the end, I think it's a, a pretty good reflection on what the community needs are based on the four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars that we have.
Mayor, can you go, or Ellen, can you go over a little bit about the application process for the public services, or how people would contact? They contact your office if they need to have roof or windows replaced?
Yep, we hang flyers and we advertise at the newspaper. It's also posted online.
Okay.
Senior Center, Veteran Center.
Okay.
Yep, and also all the nonprofits, obviously. I send them the flyer.
Yep. And the application process for the public service, services like Beacon of Hope or what have you, they?
For all the nonprofits.
They come?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other councillor have any question or comment? Councillor David Com, for me?
Thank you. This loan here, eighteen thousand, I think if I remember right, several years ago?
Twenty-year.
We took a twenty-year loan to do sidewalks, right? In the core area?
Yep.
What year was that? How much longer do we have?
I think we have ten years left. We're halfway through, and it goes up a little bit each year. So this year, it's gone from fifteen to eighteen.
Okay. Is it going to do that every year?
We have, yeah, it shows you a schedule. So in two more years, it'll increase that much more.
Okay, so about ten more years, then it's done. Okay.
And remember, I mean, we had the discussion at the time because we didn't have any money to put towards sidewalks, and now when we get free cash and we're able to, you know, do more of those sidewalks and apply for grants, you know, we didn't have that opportunity in the past, but they were badly needed, especially for the people that lived on the east side that would walk all of the time to the, to the mall and work there and shop there. So it was a critical junction, you know, critical connection for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Councillor Frida?
Not really a question, but this is a federal program. It's clearly a mayor's program. I know, Ellen, you administer it, but it's really the mayor's program to do what he wants.
Yep.
So, I mean, this is a question that comes up every year, so we're lucky to be continuing to get it because it's been threatened many years not to get it, but it is completely up to the mayor.
Can you be all set? All right, thank you very much.
You.
Thanks. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
All set for C-79, Mr. President?
All set.
C-79, Dean J. Masarella, mayor, requests that the attached loan order for eleven million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars be adopted for finance of an aeration basin and secondary clarifier upgrade project. This was given regular course on May thirteenth. It was scheduled for a public hearing on May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, at six thirteen P.M. Public hearing was continued to tonight, six twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, at six thirty. We had a informational meeting with Mr. Brooks relative to this, and I'll open this up to any member of the public that has any question relative to, I'm sorry, any comment relative to C-79. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on C-79? Third and final time, I'll go to members of the council. Any members of the council have any questions or have any comments relative to C-79? None being seen, Mr. President. I'd ask that the public hearing on C-79 be closed. Okay, this is relative to petition fifty-nine nineteen. There's a public hearing before the Lemister City Council. Technor Apex Company located at thirty-one Fuller Street requests to amend flammable liquids license from thirty thousand gallons to sixty thousand gallons. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Do you want to join us? Good evening.
Hello.
If you don't mind introducing yourselves.
I'm Rick Leonard. I am the Environmental Health and Safety Manager at Technor Apex in Lemister.
Okay.
And I'm Clark Sylvester. I'm the plant manager at Technor Apex in Lemister.
Okay. And can you just give us a quick summary of what it is you want to accomplish?
Sure. Installation of a second mineral oil tank, which will accommodate an expansion in production at the thirty-one Fuller Street, actually thirty-three Fuller Street production facility allows additional up to four million pounds of product and expansion of the facility and increased workforce.
Okay. And my understanding is the fire department and the health department have both issued favorable recommendations?
That's correct.
Okay. Before I go to members of the council, is there any member of the public who wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition or have any questions? Mr. Masarella?
Dean Masarella. I think there are a couple neighbors here, and they're interested in what the oil is, is it, they live nearby, is it, is it, could it explode and cause fire? And also, I know what they do there, but it might be a good time to sort of explain. They're an expanding business, they provide good wage jobs, and they're a growing company here in the city, and a very safe company, might add, take a number of tours of the building. So I think that would help some of the neighbors that are here that just aren't sure what you mean by mineral oil.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, do you guys care to expand on all this?
Sure. What we're storing is a, a white mineral oil. It's combustible liquid, not a flammable liquid. The flashpoint is four hundred and twenty degrees Fahrenheit. So it's not much of a, a risk for flammability and explosion. Currently, we're storing in a thirty thousand gallon above-ground storage tank with full secondary containment. And this is, this is mineral oil that is food-grade mineral oil that's essentially the same that you would go to the drugstore to buy for your child that is... that you would go to the drugstore to buy for your child, that is irregular.
Or like baby oil, just unscented.
And can you describe with more specificity the expansion that you're intending to conduct there?
The mineral oil is used in our primary product, which is a compounded rubber. The compounded rubber product is used in automobile seals around gaskets, around your doors, windows. It's also used in healthcare products. It's used in the wires on your earbuds, anywhere where you see this squishy rubber. The mineral oil is a primary component, up to thirty percent of our product that we make. We make essentially pellets that we sell to other manufacturers that turn it into products, such as automobile gaskets or window seals, or, you know, the bottom of your cup holders in your car. So, all we produce is the primary product, and mineral oil is one of the major ingredients in our product.
Okay. And how long have you been operating at this site?
As Technor, probably seven years.
Since two thousand and ten as Technor.
Okay, and prior to that?
Prior to that, it was DSM, and they originated the business on that site in nineteen ninety-two timeframe.
Okay. And what are the current hours of operation?
Twenty-four-seven.
Twenty-four-seven? And how many employees do you currently have?
I've got ninety-four at the Leominster site.
Okay. And as a result of this expansion, how many more employees do you?
We brought in an additional fourteen employees.
Are there any other members of the audience who have any questions or wish to comment?
Just concerned with...
Sir, if you don't mind, if you could just come to the microphone. It's painless. It's painless. You could just identify yourself in your...
I am Dennis Periotti. I live at one fifty-two Lincoln Terrace. My daughter lives on Castle Street, the next street over. We're just, you know, I mean, it's all only good is what, you know, what it does and what it's used for, but it seems like it's on a much larger scale, and, you know, you can, if it's flammable, it's flammable. I mean, it's just an issue and a concern that we have up there, and that's why we wanted to just get some questions answered.
Okay.
And if they'd like to pay my house insurance.
Do you gentlemen want to expand a little on the safety precautions and procedures that are in place at the site?
Well, we've... Most of our procedures are designed around spill control. Because of the very high flashpoint, it really doesn't come into play from the fire and explosibility issue. So, throughout our operation, we'd have grounding and bonding, so we don't have any stray electrical But again, the mineral oil is such a low risk when it comes to the fire and flammability arena, that there's nothing specific that we're doing for that.
Again, it has to be at four hundred and twenty degrees Fahrenheit before it will flash. So, we don't have, you know, in our product, in our process, that's all contained, that's all part of our process, but out in the storage area, obviously, it's never going to get anywhere close to that temperature.
Yeah, for the information of everyone concerned, flashpoint, and I use that a couple of times, that's the temperature at which a material will give off enough vapors that if you provide a source of ignition, it'll combust. It's not an auto ignition temperature. You have to have that source of ignition. So, you know, it's relatively high. If you take acetone or some of those chemicals, you're talking zero degrees. You know, in the middle of winter, outdoors, it's capable of providing enough energy if you provide a spark. So, mineral oil is well out of the range of concern from the flammability hazards, quite honestly. It's a combustible liquid versus a flammable liquid.
Let me just go to the public before I go to the council. Second time, are there any members of the public who have any questions or wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, does any members of the public have any questions or wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? I'll go to other members of Legal Affairs. Council Frida?
Have you had any issues in any of the other? You said Leominster site. Do I assume you have other sites?
Yes.
Have you had any issues at any other sites?
Not with mineral oil, no. No, no issues.
No with mineral oil?
No.
Any type of combustion or fire scare or?
We've had some issues with our final product in other plants, but it has nothing to do essentially with the storage of mineral oil or the transfer of mineral oil.
Was that mineral oil mixed with another ingredient?
Yes, several different ingredients.
And are they all combustible?
No. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And the Leominster site is solely limited to mineral oil?
Yes.
Okay. Council Badanza, anything?
You mentioned secondary containment?
Yes.
Then I would assume that the new, is this an additional tank?
Yes.
Yeah, I would assume that that one has secondary containment as well?
Yeah.
That's the only question I have.
Any other councillors? Council Zephyr?
Yep, thank you very much. Can you describe that secondary containment? This is the thirty thousand gallon above-ground tank.
Basically, what you've got is a circular round cylinder that holds thirty thousand gallons of mineral oil, and underneath and around it, up to about the two-thirds of the level up, is a full squared containment that runs the full length and width of that. So, it can contain a hundred and ten percent of that thirty thousand gallons.
And is that area secured? Do you have a fence around it?
Our site is secured.
The whole site is secured?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got chain link fence all the way around with twenty-four-seven gate.
And then, how is the, how's the mineral oil transferred from that big tank into the building for manufacture?
It's pumped.
Underground? I mean, you have under...
No, no, it's above ground.
It's above ground?
It's all above ground.
Okay. Is it pumped through pipes?
Welded pipes.
Welded pipes? So, it's pumped through welded pipes above ground?
Yes, correct.
Into the manufacturing facility?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are they secured in any kind of fashion, or do they have any kind of containment, you know, for pipe bursts?
The piping? No.
No.
No. There is a very short length of piping on the outside of the facility with full exposure, if you will. And the rest of the piping is internal to the plant. So, there are no floor drains, there's no risk of getting it into stormwater system once you've got it into the plant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councillors? Council Cormier?
How often are the tanks inspected?
Annually.
And is that done locally by the city and the state, or?
It's done by a third-party consultant.
Okay. But does the city of Leominster ever go over to inspect these? Does the state?
No, the only, the only time we had inspections is when we implemented the tank, when we constructed the tanks. I'm permitted with the Fire Department as well as the city of Leominster.
So, when you applied for this new permit, did the Fire Department, did someone from there go over and inspect it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
State Fire Marshal and local Leominster.
Okay. Thank you.
I think just for a point of clarification, I think, I think the Leominster Fire, I think you're required to obtain an annual permit from the Leominster Fire Department.
Correct.
Right, and that's after an inspection?
Yeah.
Right. Any other councillors? Council Frida?
Yeah, I'm just curious. With this expansion, are you looking to expand the company at any point?
Well, we've expanded the production capabilities within the present facility.
You're not looking to expand and add more people, or?
Not at this point.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Council Feckley.
So, if any of this material, I know it's mineral oil, but if any of it did escape, especially going from the tanks to the facility, how would it be cleaned up? And would it be considered hazardous?
No, it's not hazardous.
Okay.
It's a non-haz oil. It becomes an environmental hazard for sure, which is why we have a fairly complex SPPC plan, Spill Prevention Control and Countermeasures Plan, which were required because we store in volume. There's that short exposure, and honestly, it gets frequent inspections because it's, it goes in right at our plant entry. So, it gets frequent observation and inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sir, did you have...
One more question.
Sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's any type of smell associated with this that I'm gonna have to tolerate?
No.
No?
No, no.
No, not, you know, no, it's not a joke.
No, no, and I understand where you're coming from.
I mean, I've lived up there for years, and we do, there are some smells, depending on how the weather is during the course of the, course of the year, so...
The mineral oil itself is odorless. So, the mineral oil is, increase in that is not going to increase the odor.
So, what exactly are you amending? Are you amending the...
How much we can store.
You can store there, right?
Yeah.
Because it was thirty?
We were at thirty thousand, and with the second tank, that'll put us up to sixty thousand.
Okay. And you did say you operate twenty-four-seven?
Correct.
Which I'm fully aware of, because I have to listen to train whistles at midnight. Oh, yeah, that's funny. My wife gets up at three o'clock in the morning.
Eleven-thirty.
I mean, it's ridiculous. What's the, what's the, you know, not to get off track here, but I don't understand why...
I've been, I've been here eleven years. This is the first time that the train is...
Well, I've been there for fifty years, and that's really not the case.
Eleven-thirty, they came last week. Usually, they're between four and five.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, Mr. President, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you. By law, we start the meeting now, and then we will call for a recess, and then we'll get back to the next hearing along with the public forum. The meeting for June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
We'll begin with the roll call vote of the honorable members of the city council, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Present.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Council Ottinger.
Present.
Council Badanza.
Present.
Council Feckley.
Present.
Council Sheller Foziffer.
Present.
Council Dabrowski.
Present.
Council Frida.
Present.
I should record us here. They were all night, each of the councils is present, all nine of us. I'll yield the floor to the Chairwoman of Records. Are you ready to report?
I am. Mr. President, I have the minutes of the city council meeting, June tenth, two thousand and nineteen. I find them to be in order, and I ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you. Any questions on the minutes? Thank you. Do I have a motion for recess? So moved. Seconded? Thank you. We're in recess. I'll yield the floor to the Legal Affairs Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is relative to petition sixty-nine nineteen. This is a public hearing before the city of Leominster, City Council, Georgia Pacific Consumer Operations LLC for Dixie Consumer Products located at one forty-nine Hamilton Street, request to amend flammable liquids license from seventeen thousand sixty-seven gallons to twenty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-seven gallons. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you guys mind.
Come on in.
If you could introduce yourselves.
Hello. Hello. I'm Caleb Hyatt. I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Manager at the Leominster site.
I'm Steve Schmidt. I'm the Reliability Manager.
Okay, so you're seeking an increase of a little over four thousand gallons. You want to just describe to us exactly what, what the company does at the site and the reason for the increase?
So, at our Leominster Dixie site, we make cutlery, the plastic utensils, forks, spoons, knives. The reason for the increase was after going through and reviewing all of our processes, new equipment, things like that, we realized that we hadn't captured everything. We also added in all of our transformers around the site that hold FR3 fluid. That was something that we decided to try and capture on our plan of the two sword license. So, we just wanted to make sure that we had everything, maximum capacity, what we could have on site.
So, I mean, just to summarize, so after doing some maintenance and improvements, you discovered that your, your existing facility is actually able to store more than what you're currently licensed to store?
Yes. After we had an addition of one piece of equipment, and then with the supplemental equipment, additional waste oil, virgin oil for the equipment, and then also adding in our transformers that were already existing.
And can you just describe the flammable liquid that's being stored on site?
So, in the transformers, we have FR3 fluid, which is kind of like a more environmentally friendly mineral oil. And then also, in our equipment, we have hydraulic fluid in the injection molding process. We have to, we need hydraulic fluid to be able to operate our equipment.
Okay. And how is this, how is this fluid stored?
So, each one of the, we have twenty-eight molding machines, so each tank has its own individual reservoir. So, maximum capacity on a single tank is about seven hundred gallons.
Okay.
And then, it's broken up between the different sized injection molding machines.
Okay. Now, when those machines run low, how are they filled up?
We have a fifty-gallon transfer cart, and that's filled up from a thousand-gallon new oil storage tank. So, we've got a thousand-gallon new oil storage tank, and then a fifteen-hundred-new-gallon storage tank.
Okay. And where are the storage tanks located?
They're both inside the building, so they're, and they're within a secondary containment for both of those. We don't store anything outside at our facility.
Okay. And then, how is the fluid transferred from the tanks to the individual pieces of equipment?
So, each one of our machines has a quick coupling on it, so it...
Directly linked?
Directly linked to it, yep.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me just go to the public first. Are there any members of the public who have any questions or wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, does any member of the audience have any questions or wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, are there any members of the audience who have any questions or wish to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, before I open it up, I just want to note for the record that the Leominster Fire Department and the Leominster Board of Health have inspected this matter and both have recommended approval. Go to members of Legal Affairs first. Council Frida, any questions?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Council Badanza?
No questions.
Okay. Any other members of the council have any questions or comments? Council Marshan?
Thank you. That's in the Ward Fire neighborhood, if I may.
Gentlemen, is this the last time you're coming down, and do you anticipate every time you change equipment, you're gonna need an upgrade? Gentlemen, um, is this the last time you're coming down and do anticipate every time you change equipment, you're gonna need an up, upgrade?
Depending on the, you know, the future of the site investments, we could have to come down again. If we do expand, uh, that would be something we would need to do. But based on current volumes, equipment and what we have on site, uh, we shouldn't need to, uh, come back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So anybody else? Council, Council Feckley?
How many people do you employ?
We employ approximately two hundred.
Oh, employer. Good, thank you.
All right, anybody else? If not, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the public forum is now open. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first person that has signed up is Mr. Sylvester, who spoke earlier this evening. Would you like to speak again, sir? Okay. We now have Richard Leonard. Mr. Leonard? Okay, right. And we have Nona Ogula, school committee.
Thank you. Nona Ogula, three twenty Pleasant Street, Leominster. I'm here to address you about the budget. I have mixed feelings about the budget that you're set to vote on tonight. I am very happy for all departments that are receiving what they requested, but I'm disheartened that the only department not receiving what they requested is the school department. And let me make a side note. I was told I was not, that I did not know what I was talking about. Your budget has a column that is called Department Requests. That column matches the column of Mayor's requests, with the exception of the school department. So I didn't know what I was talking about. I cannot understand why the mayor, as a member of the school committee, jumped at the chance to motion to accept the budget, even going as far as praising the administration for putting together a budget that reflected a conservative but forward-moving budget, only to cut it when he presented it to you. As one of your members stated at the budget hearing last week, the mayor promised more money to come to the school department and we see tonight an appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars to come to the school department. Why do we have to go through this when it would be so simple to approve what we put forth in our budget? Also, why is the mayor's budget reflective of a transportation cost of three million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it is actually four million three hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and eight dollars? Why are we forced to use school choice and Medicaid money to pay off transportation and health insurance when that money should be used for students in the classroom? As a resident, taxpayer and retiree of the city, I was pleased to know that we are now fully funded and celebrated that achievement and heard from city officials that we would see no tax increase and more money to come to the schools. And here we are today with a budget before you that reflects a two-and-a-half percent tax increase and reduction in the school system's budget. I know you are faced with a difficult decision, either to pass this budget or defeat it, which would mean the city operates with a one-twelfth budget. Remember, this is an election year and the public should know the absolute truth about the budget and where their tax money is going to. Why do we need such huge amounts in our free cash and stabilization accounts? Investment in our feud in education is the best way to spend our money as it is investment in our future and will be the doctors, teachers, fire and policemen in the years to come. Good luck on your decision, thank you.
Thank you. We now have Mr. Schmidt.
Sir, I signed up in air.
That's okay. You have the floor if you want or anything else.
Thank you.
Georgia Pacific will be very pleased with your decision. That's it for the people that have signed up, I'll open the floor up to the general audience. If anyone would like to address the city council at this time, please come to the microphone.
I'll take a spot. I gave Dean my sheet, so I don't know, I'll just talk, just, um, an idea on the budget, again.
You need to identify.
Oh, Gary Zimmerman, forty-seven.
Ain't exactly what you're talking about, thank you.
Gary Zimmerman, forty-seven Lynn Haven Road, Leominster. This is about the budget. One of the things I didn't bring up is that one of the ideas, and I've talked to teachers outside of Leominster and I actually talked to Paula about it once, um, and I see a lot of the council members here. It's possibly going to a full-time, full-year school sys, system. That would alleviate other things about kids being out for two and a half months. I know there's a study that said after a month, I think ki, kids learn, lose their thought process and it's back to zero. So why not have three, four sessions throughout the year, still have a hundred and eighty-two days, so we don't get the union upset? But get rid of summer school and have it go all along. Would it save? And the reason I bring these things up, even when I brought up earlier, is things to think about. Again, the taxpayers keep footing the bill for everything. I would have never expected half the things I'd be paying for as a taxpayer. But, um, would it help the school system? Would it be a better education if you did it in three sessions and had multi-week breaks in between? I don't know, but it's just an idea that might help save taxpayers' money, thank you.
Thank you. Would any of the member of the audience like to address the council?
Melissa Bible, one seventy-eight Fifth Street, Leominster. I speak to you to ask you to support the school department budget as presented to you and voted on by the entire school committee, including the mayor. The budget crisis of twenty eighteen is still being impacted in our schools, with our kids and with the staff. The twenty nineteen budget brought us some relief, yet our kids are still underfunded and understaffed. The city council expenses, as Nona referred to in the budget department, were maintained. The budget department request and the mayor's request. Mayor's expenses maintained, comptroller expenses maintained, assessors maintained, police, fire, building inspector, emergency management, everything maintained except for school expenses that were cut by six hundred and nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Last year, we asked you for equity, compliance and safety, basic needs for our kids, and we couldn't get July first, that budget. I'm asking, knowing that you can't increase the budget, you really have two options. You can either go to the one-twelfth budget or you can start making some line-by-line budget cuts. So if we're gonna do equity, let's do equity and give everybody in every department a budget cut.
Thank you, would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Mayor?
Dean Masarola, mayor. Department heads, uh, raise your hand if you made a request and it didn't get funded. Okay, just let the record reflect, departments, um, didn't get what they requested and the fire department is not here as well. So, um, let the record reflect, the hands that were raised here that requested additional funding in the budget that wasn't provided to them. I did vote for the budget as a school committee member and then the budget goes to the mayor and that's always been a conflict because on May sixth, you don't know what the numbers are gonna be. Now, we, we were promised by the legislature that they were gonna take up foundation budget and we fully expected, based on a number of meetings that we had around the state, that there'd be additional funding in that budget. Now, that was everyone. All other school systems put that aside because they, they weren't sure they could actually take that up. So any extra funding that will come from the state is, it was a result of the foundation budget, were not included in the school budgets across the state. They just pulled them out and said, well, just wait. Ours was included. If you want to compare, um, the budget crisis year, we were two million dollars over net school spending. Following year, one point four million in net school spending. Following year, one point seven million dollars in su, uh, net school spending. And, uh, this year alone, and I'll just go through this real quickly. The budget went up. It was passed without issue by the city council. Fiscal year eighteen with an additional one point two million dollar increase. Fiscal year nineteen, hardly anybody was here, I think Mr. Zimmerman was here, spoke on the budget. It went up one point six million. This year, it's gone up three point four million. And that's without the money coming from the state legislature cause we don't know yet what the senate and the house are gonna agree on. So that's additional revenue. Last year, the school department closed out funds. Superintendent asked if we could reappropriate those funds. That's on the council agenda tonight for four hundred and sixty-one thousand. So if you take the three million that we began with, we had another, um, free cash appropriation, which was a transfer from that amount that was closed out of four sixty-one. And then an appropriation tonight that we put in there, and the reason we put it in there is a catch-all because the superintendent, I fully funded the positions. We expected on the expense side that we'd have the money from the state. Now the state is talking today, that they might not have the budget passed and may have to look for an extension on the budget. So what we did is we put that in as a stopgap, so we could go ahead and hire thirteen new positions in the school department. So on the salary and wages were fully funded, but they were worried about expenses to pay for those new employees. Now, the school departments chose again to set that aside and wait until they knew exactly what the state funding was gonna be before they went ahead and allocate that. We didn't. We put that in the budget with a certain assumptions. So total next year, between what was being transferred, the extra four hundred thousand dollars and the three million already appropriated. Remember, yes, eighteen, one point four, what's it? One point two. The following year, which was last year, one point six. And this year was another three million, add another four hundred and sixty-one that was carried over from last year, another four hundred thousand dollars that's being appropriated hopefully tonight. That's three point eight million dollars of new money for the schools. Google, get on your phones right now and start Googling whether other school departments are increasing their budget that are our size or even close to our size. Go lower in student enrollment, go higher in student enrollment. And I don't think you'll find anyone even close to that. No one even close to that. City Leominster has a very generous transportation program. I think that i, i, anyone who was to look and talk to other school districts, they're all making cuts. They're either making cuts or they're calling a, uh, static budget, which is basically funding what they did last year and happy to do that. I think we've been extremely generous. We ran into some financial, financial problems in, uh, twenty seventeen because of poor management and poor use of taxpayers' dollars and still, we were over two million dollars. That shows you the disparity. People left the school system because they heard we laid off two hundred teachers. We didn't lay off two hundred teachers. Nowhere close to that. So tonight, you're right, there's a great disparity. Two thousand seventeen, I'm sorry, eighteen, the budget increased by one point two million. Fiscal year nineteen, the budget increased one point six million. Today, three point eight million the schools will have starting July first to spend. I thought there'd be a celebration here tonight. I thought there'd be celebration here. Didn't happen that way. Again, this is a well-thought-out budget. Does it do everything everybody asked for? No. Does it hire thirteen new positions in the school department? It does. Did we wait to find out what the final numbers are? No. You can, I, I've, I've looked at almost every budget in the entire state, every city and school budget. I know them by heart. Danvers, Gloucester, Westfield, West Springfield, Springfield, anybody smaller or larger than us, I've looked at all their budgets. They have a level service budget in most cases. They raised the cost of what it costs for a student to park at the high school. We didn't do that. They raised the cost of what it takes for a student to enter in, to act after-school activities. Some three to five hundred dollars increase. We didn't do that. Again, I thought this would be a celebration of the fact that the city is in great financial shape, probably one of the most, best managed mid-size city, not only in the state but in the country. And, uh, and, 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 and I hope the city council will pass this this evening. And again, we're all here, we're gonna stay here for the rest of the night and we're here to answer any questions and if there are things that you heard that you want cleared up, we'd be glad to answer those questions as well.
Thank you, mayor. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council?
You got there first. Uh, Michael Stassen, eight ninety-three Main Street. I'm gonna try and be brief. I don't know if I should say anything about the budget or not. Cause I, like Nona, I have mixed feelings. I do think it's a practical matter. The school department spends about thirty per, five percent of its budget before school starts and if we don't pass a budget tonight, we'll have less than half of that available to us. So, in any case, the thing I really wanted to mention was Communication Ninety-nine, which is the, uh, transfers, um, from the workers' compensation loss funds, money that was not spent. I just wanna point out that two hundred thousand of those dollars have been reported as net school spending. So if we have not spent them, uh, one way or another, that will, should have an impact on the schools. That's all.
Thank you. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? John, you were next. Second call?
Okay, uh, I'm sure I'll be talking with you later, but just for the general members of, my name's John Richard. I am the city controller, I am the chairman of the retirement board. Also run the group insurance program. Just for the general public's knowledge, cause there's been statements, uh, made here tonight and I know they're, you know, they're, they're trying their best and they're, they're talking how they feel, but I just wanna make sure that, and I know that you realize, there is no such thing on a municipal level as a one-twelfth budget. That's a state-level, uh, budget function. If the state doesn't pass their budget, which looks like they might not be doing, we have to pass a budget in order to spend money. So, and as the school committee person said, our, our expenses aren't one-twelfth. For instance, the pension obligation, which, you know, usually is eight million dollars, is due July first. You can't do one-twelfth or it's a very expensive loan. Also, there was mentioned made about the celebration on the retirement. And that's true because you should celebrate it because the city has saved millions of dollars already because of its funding mechanism of the retirement system. And will be saving hundreds of millions of dollars to the school department also, is part of that, uh, for future because of the way the city addressed this unfunded liability. And unfortunately, I wish we could offload our risk, once you hit one hundred percent, you never had to worry about it again. But that's not how it works because the markets change. Last year, um, for the calendar year, uh, for instance, there was a negative return. So if you have a, a negative return and you have a positive assumption discount rate of five point five percent, so you'd add those two together and you're, you're short on your return assumption. So if you're short ten percent and you have two hundred million in assets, that's twenty million dollars short. And that doesn't even include actuarial losses. Uh, for instance, in one year, uh, I think our last study, the actuarial liability in one year went up ten million dollars. So being one hundred percent funded at a point in time is a great thing to celebrate. As a matter of fact, we were the only system of a hundred and six. As a matter of fact, we were the only system of 106 that reached that point. And that is not in any way, shape, or form negative. But the two things, and I shared the letter with you when we had that little celebration that we wanted to emphasize was that we were going to protect that appropriation because of the volatility of the liability. Unfortunately, we can't offload risk. Our discount rate is 5.5%. We can't at this point match cash flows. We'd have to have a lot lower discount rate and be able to afford. I know this might be getting a little bit technical for you, but I think we've proven our ability to manage this cost. There are communities right near us that are appropriating $1 million more per year for the past few years, and it's going to be a major problem, but it isn't for Leominster. Also, on the side of the OPEB, that is a real cost that has been negotiated with unions. And we are paying our required contribution. So, if you're offering a benefit, it is the only responsible thing to do is to pay the expense because it doesn't go away because you didn't fund it. It would just grow by a very hefty discount rate. It's like taking a loan. But Leominster will be saving the taxpayers and the departments through their services hundreds of millions of dollars because of the responsible method that you and the mayor in this city has taken. And so, yes, you should celebrate these things and not try to think of gimmicks or one-time things that may seem to address a particular problem today but creates much larger problems for the future. Thank you, and I'm sure I'll be talking to you.
John, thank you. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Mayor, go ahead. Take your time.
I meant to speak to the whole free cash because I think that's the part that gets, you get questions about all the time, like, "What's free cash mean?" So, where does free cash come from? A lot of the free cash comes from reimbursements. So, Wendy does a great job with grants, but many of the reimbursements, many times, we have to pay for those. You appropriate the money first, then we get, then we get that reimbursed to us later. In the bad economy, people sometimes get behind in their taxes and fees, and we send out maybe a demand notice that gets people's attention, and somehow or another, they come up with the money. Or maybe there's a sale of a property, of a real estate property, and at the closing, that is, that is sort of rectified from one amount to the other side of the balance sheet. That money gets closed out at the end of the fiscal year, and that becomes free cash. Water and sewer is closed out because, again, we don't have an enterprise fund, the water and sewer money when it closes out. So, when you're paying your bill or they're collecting money still in June, then there's not that time to spend that money or allocate it. So, that is closed out and then returned. And that's where you see some of the transfers tonight will come from free cash. So, the idea of somehow or another going after and trying to lower free cash, it's one-time revenue, and you may not have that. Remember, there was a period in time when some of us were here that we had negative free cash. We also don't have a capital account where we borrow money or bond for things other than the new schools and the library, and we'll borrow money certainly and have a bond for the police station. But everything else, remember, is covered by free cash. This year alone, just as an example, 2.8 million just on the schools, and that's 29% of all free cash that got spent on schools, but also went to the police department, the fire department, parks department, some of the equipment's getting old at the parks department. We replaced that. All of those things got brought to you. There are a number of things that are before you tonight, but the free cash isn't free. So, we take the free cash somehow or another, we take that away. Then next year, you're going to have an appropriation before you to either have to raise taxes or cut something else because now you have to borrow to make those purchases. Remember, for 26 years, 26 budgets, we have never borrowed for anything other than the three schools and the public library. That's it. Every other city has a line item for debt, so they go out and borrow it for this. And sometimes they're borrowing for 10 years when they're borrowing money for police cruises that only lasts three to five years. So, all the money that you've appropriated, everything that's on here tonight, is a result of free cash that comes and is to be spent for one-time purchases. And, yeah, we take in a lot of money some years, and then some years we don't. It'll go up and down, but a lot of it is just at the end of the year. You know, we just got, we just received some reimbursements just recently from some of the grants that Wendy did. What was the one for Masworks? 2.5 million for Masworks, and that may come in at different times, but you can't count on that for next year. You don't know that that money's going to be there. And now, all the purchases that you're making now might have to be delayed in all departments. So, I hope that sort of clears it up, especially for the public, because I know people will say, "What's all this free cash?" And, you know, again, it comes from another, a number of different resources, but it's primary focus is to be spent on one-time appropriations so we don't have to borrow for those, which ultimately saves the taxpayer substantial amount of money and keeps our debt per ratio down so we can borrow for the police station. So, again, we'll be here if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. We'll go back in the session in five minutes. Council's back in session. Before we begin the meeting, I think it would be very appropriate to recognize a moment of silence for Mary Beth Bro, a very beloved school teacher who was a nurse for a long time at Leominster High School, probably one of the most beloved educators I've ever known in my life, coming right from my own children's mouth and also daughter as well. So, will you all please stand and join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. We now begin with communications from the mayor. We do have a list of emergency preambles. We'll handle them one at a time. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-116. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $17,200 to the Emergency Management Agency expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
We will first vote to accept or deny this emergency preamble. Are there any questions on the floor? Counsel Frida.
According, according to the charter, the emergency has to be explained why we're doing this, I believe.
Well, we have many of them.
Well, it clearly states.
And I'll ask you, who are you asking? The Finance Chair to do this for you?
Well, you're asking for an emergency preamble, so is it you asking?
Right, correct.
Okay, so it would be, I would be asking you.
They're on the agenda tonight. They came in after hours. They're on the agenda.
Well, I know what they are.
Well, that's the response.
I know what an emergency is. But the emergency, when you vote on it, it's two-thirds clearly, it's supposed to be the, plainly designated as an emergency measure, which describes and declares that an emergency exists, in which defines.
I've read that. I've read that.
Okay, so we need to say what the emergency is, the way I read that.
I'm going to yield the floor to the Chairman of Finance if he can assist with that to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, all of these are, most of them at least, I think, if not all of them, are coming from excess and deficiency. As we know, we had an unusual circumstance this year with how excess and deficiency, or sometimes referred to as free cash, was certified. It was certified very late. These are all significant needs, and we'll have to go through them one by one. But to lay the groundwork for the first one, they're all significant needs. They're wanting in the city, they're matters that have been brought to us to appropriate for, and these needs are all compelling, one in each. And we don't have much time. The fiscal year is about to end. So, it's either we spend this money or it gets, it goes back to excess and deficiency for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Counsel Frida, follow-up question?
Yeah, through the chair to the Finance Chair. We're doing this on the 24th of June because from October until now, we didn't get free cash a week ago. So, we're in a position now where if anybody had any questions about any one of these appropriations, there's no opportunity to ask it because we're voting, we're being asked to vote on it tonight. An emergency is an emergency, so it's for the health, welfare of the community if it's being jeopardized. Some of these, yes. Some of them, I agree with. That's why we need to do them individually. But my opinion would be to have a special meeting so that we're not doing it as an emergency.
To, to the.
I don't want to have a special meeting, but that would be the proper way to do it.
I'll yield the floor back to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, you know, of course, under the charter, these all have to be ratified. So, anybody has objection to any of these would have an opportunity to appear at the next council meeting and address anyone that they're interested in objecting to for ratification. So, it's not entirely true to suggest that no one has an opportunity to review these. It's, it is the 24th of June. There's not a lot of time to notice a special meeting. There's not a lot of time to do anything. I wouldn't want to see any of this funding jeopardized. These are all important items, one by one, and it makes perfect sense, in my view at least, to address them. We can address them tonight. If there is an objection, people have an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Any other questions on the floor regarding the emergency preamble? If not, others in favor of the emergency preamble for C-116, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of five to four. It is now before us. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yeah, I got you.
It has to be a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Okay, it's not accepted. We'll now move on to emergency preamble, Communication 117. Madam, Madam Clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-117. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to the Highway Capital Outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. from the excess and deficiency account.
We'll first vote on the emergency preamble. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of accepting it as emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, excuse me, those opposed, three. Okay, thank you. So we have six to three on that one. Mr. Chairman, Communication 117, are you ready to report?
Yes, C-117, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to the Highway Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is relative to the Litchfield Street Bridge. You may recall that the DPW Director was here relative to the progress on that Litchfield Street Bridge. The bids came in quite a bit higher than expected. We've got some of this in the DOT Small Bridge Program, and this amount is necessary to, if you allow me, bridge the gap between what came in from the bridge program and what the bid was. And it'd be my recommendation, Mr. President, to grant C-117. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-117.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 117. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counsel Freedom.
Now, this I would consider an emergency because you're talking about the funding that we're getting, as well as fixing the bridge on one of our roads.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Mr. Chairman?
I probably shouldn't respond to this, but that bridge has been needing repair for a long time, and the emergency management communication, which sought to outfit a truck, a command truck, in my view, is just as wanting as C-117.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Freedom, anything else to add?
Through the chair, would we be risking...
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, through the chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Would we be risking money that, is there's a grant to that, isn't there?
Through the chair.
That we could possibly risk losing if we didn't vote to...
Are we referring to Communication 116?
117. We already went, we didn't...
Was your question directed to 116 or 117?
My question is, I'm responding to the bridge issue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Communication 117, can you respond?
I'm sure we could take it up as a special meeting, just as easy as we could with 116.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, I just want to be clear about what we're doing here.
You are.
So the public can see it.
You are, thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Okay. All those in favor of granting Communication 117, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 117's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $250,000 be appropriated to the Highway Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to move for the adoption of the order on Communication 117. Are there any final comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 117, the order's been adopted. Thank you. We now move on to Communication 118. Madam Clerk?
Emergency preamble, C-118, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $400,000 to the School Department Expense Account, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue regarding appropriation that's being made in anticipation of Chapter 70 aid being increased from the governor's budget. In the event that the final state aid Chapter 70 amount does not increase, the fiscal year 2020 tax levy will absorb this amount.
We'll first vote on the emergency preamble. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counsel Freedom.
Through the chair to the Finance Chair.
Go ahead.
Can we vote on anticipated amount of money on a budget that isn't approved yet?
Mr. Chairman?
There, it's an alternative funding source. So there is a guaranteed source for the money, which is fiscal 2020 revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So in fact, if in fact we don't get the Chapter 70 money we need to support this, the city, in order to make those 13 hires that the School Department wants to affect, is guaranteeing a source of revenue for those 13 hires.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Freedom.
Through the chair. My question was regarding whether we could appropriately support an appropriation on a budget that's not approved yet.
We're not supporting it solely on the Chapter 70 budget. We're supporting it on our own funds as well.
Correct.
So there is a funding source, and we can do that.
Thank you.
That's not what it says, but that's...
Any other questions or comments on Communication 118? Counsel Shelfo Zephyr.
Through the chair to the Finance Chair. Why wasn't the School Department budget just amended to include the $400,000?
We haven't voted on the emergency yet, Mr. President.
That's right.
We haven't even accepted this as an emergency. We're asking questions about...
Okay, so for point of order, what's happening is we're either going to vote for the emergency preamble up or down. There's not going to be any further discussion on that, and I'm going to carry that right through. So that part, then we can get into the debate on the other component afterwards. So specifically, on the emergency preamble. All those in favor of accepting Communication 118 as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to three, the emergency preamble has been accepted. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield the floor back to you for a recommendation.
My recommendation would be to grant, as you know, the mayor came before us this evening and indicated that the expenses for those 13, I mean, I'm sorry, the wages for those 13 positions sought by the School Department are in the budget, the mayor's budget already. There's $338,000 worth of expenses attached to those 13 positions that was not in the budget, and the School Department came and made the case during the hearing that they can't commit to the hiring of those 13 people without having a funding source and being responsible, of course. So that's why the mayor sent the communication down to meet their needs with respect to those 13 positions. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-118.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-118.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 118. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counsel Shalefo Zephyr.
Thank you, through the chair to the Finance Chair. Why would we have a separate communication? Why wouldn't we just amend the existing budget in our budget book to include this expense?
If we amended the budget, it would require an amended notice of hearing of the budget, which would run us into timeframes that we couldn't meet.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the floor?
I'm also.
All those in favor of granting Communication 118, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 118 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $400,000 be appropriated to the School Department Expense Account, same to be raised from either fiscal year 2020 revenue or alternatively, Chapter 70 state aid. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard their recommendation read to move for the adoption of the order. Are there any final questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing. The order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 119. Question on the floor is to accept as an emergency preamble? Please, go ahead.
Emergency preamble?
No, not yet. If they deny it, there's no sense to read it.
Okay.
I'm going to yield the floor to the council right now. All those in favor of accepting Communication 119 as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of five to four, the emergency preamble has been denied. We now move on to Communication 120. We have an emergency preamble. Are there, all those in favor of accepting Communication 120 as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to one, the emergency preamble's been accepted. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-120, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $220,000 to the School Department Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account regarding school phone system, $200,000, Northwest HVAC, $20,000, totaling $220,000.
Communication 120 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are obviously capital needs of the School Department. They're self-explanatory. One of them is for a new school phone system. The other one is for HVAC repairs at Northwest School. These would be under $250,000 in net school spending eligible expenses. It'd be my position to grant C-120. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, third member?
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-120.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read on the floor by the chairman to grant Communication 120. Are there any questions or comments on this petition? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $220,000 be appropriated to the School Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, counsel has heard the recommendation read in a positive way for Communication 120 to move for the adoption of the order. Are there any final questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have Communication 121. All those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to two, it has been accepted as an emergency preamble. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-121, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $36,000 to the Election Registration Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 121 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to swap out a number of voting booths. Apparently, the clerk has communicated with the mayor that the office would like to buy 40 new voting booths. The present booths are, many of them are in grave disrepair, held together with such things as duct tape, and the clerk wants to be able to provide for security of the voters and privacy during the upcoming elections, and this is something that I would support. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor back to the chairman for qualification.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-121.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 121. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $36,000 be appropriated to the Election and Registration Expense Account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard their recommendation read. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 121. All those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble, bless you, please indicate in the usual manner.
Mr. President, I think it's C-122.
I'm sorry, is that what I said? What did I say, C-121? Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry. Bless you, Frank. All those, all those in favor of accepting Communication 122 as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to two, the emergency preamble is before the council. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-122, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $20,359 to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, same amount to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account.
Communication 122 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. C-122 is to meet the needs of the collective bargaining agreement so the city can fund fully the recently signed contract. It'd be my position to grant C-122. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-122.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 122. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $20,359 be appropriated to the Police Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 122's order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move down to Communication 123. All those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to three, it is before us. I'll yield the floor to the clerk. Madam Clerk, are you getting who's voting up and down on these?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's make sure that's on the record.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Emergency preamble, C-123, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $25,000 to the Medicare Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 123 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. This is an appropriation that's requested by our Treasurer, David LaPlante, to meet our requirements to pay federal Medicare expense payroll tax. That tax, of course, is 1.45%, and the additional money, or $25,000, is necessary to cover additional tax resulting from retro pay raises as well as new employees. It would be my position to grant C-123. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor back for qualification.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-123.
Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 123. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $25,000 be appropriated to the Medicare Expense Account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard their recommendation read. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move to Communication 124. We have an emergency preamble before us. All those in favor of accepting it as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to, excuse me, seven to two. The emergency preamble is now before us. Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Madam Clerk first, go ahead.
Emergency preamble, C-124, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $4,700 to the Forestry Regular Labor Account, same amount to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account.
Communication 124 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This money is necessary in order to effectuate the collective bargaining agreement reached between the city and the forestry workers at the Department of Public Works. I'd recommend the granting of C-124, Mr. President. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant C-124.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 124. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $4,700 be appropriated to Forestry Regular Labor, same to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel has heard their recommendation read. Again, are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have Communication 125. All those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to two, the emergency preamble's been accepted. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-125, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $20,000 to the Highway Regular Labor Account, same amount to be transferred from the Collective Bargaining Expense Account.
Communication 125, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar to C-124, this $20,000 is necessary in order to meet the collective bargaining contract reached between the Highway Regular, Department of, Highway Department and the city, and I'd recommend its passage and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk. Counsel...
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-125.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read to grant. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $20,000 be appropriated to the highway regular labor account. Same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any further comments or questions on Communication 125? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 126. We have an emergency preamble to accept or deny. All those in favor of accepting it, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to two, it is before the council. Madam Clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-126. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $5,500 to the highway overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account.
Communication 126 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is money necessary in order to meet the needs of the new collective bargaining agreement with the Highway Department. This money specifically relates to the new, to the overtime requirements of that new contract. Would be my position to recommend the granting of C-126, Mr. President. Please check with my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-126.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 126. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $5,500 be appropriated to the highway overtime account. Same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have Communication 127 before us as an emergency preamble. All those in favor of accepting it, as said, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed? Excuse me.
I'm just going, I'm abstaining from this due to conflict of interest. So that's why I'm not weighing in on the emergency preamble.
Absolutely. I apologize, Counselor. I should have known that. So let's put it in the record on Communication 127. Counselor Schelfel will suffer his abstaining. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the floor for another vote. All those in favor of accepting it as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one. It is accepted as emergency preamble. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-127. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $8,750 to the sewer department regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from the sewer support services expense account. Regarding regular labor, $7,500. Overtime, $1,250. Totalling $8,750.
Communication 127 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Again, this is collective bargaining related. In this particular instance, this is money involving the sewer department. And there is enough, there's enough money in the support services account to meet the requirements of the new labor contract. Would be my position to recommend granting C-127. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor back for qualification.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-127.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 127. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 127 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $8,750 be appropriated to the sewer department regular labor account. Same to be transferred from the sewer department services expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any further comments or questions on Communication 127? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 127 has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 128. Again, this is an emergency preamble. All those in favor of accepting it as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to two. It is now before us, Communication 128. Madam Clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-128. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $4,300 to the cemetery regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account.
Communication 128, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this $4,300 is necessary to meet the collective bargaining agreement reached between the city and the cemetery department. I would move or recommend the passage of C-128, Mr. President, and ask you respectfully to check with my committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of finance, Mr. President, is to grant C-128.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 128. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Thank you. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $4,300 be appropriated to the cemetery regular labor account. Same to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted on Communication 128. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have Communication 129 before us as an emergency preamble. All those in favor of accepting it as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Okay, got you again. Got you. Okay. So before we begin, Counselor Schelfel will differ. Okay, we'll abstain from this. Thank you, Counselor. All those in favor of accepting this as an emergency preamble, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one, the emergency preamble's been accepted. Madam Clerk.
Emergency preamble, C-129. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $17,000 to the water regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from the water support services expense account. Regarding regular labor, $14,800. Overtime, $2,200. Totalling $17,000.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor, I'll yield the petition to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. C-129, again, is money necessary in order to meet the collective bargaining agreement between the water department and the city. In this case, the money necessary is being transferred from water support services expense account. I would recommend the passage of C-129 and ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-129.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 129. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $17,000 be appropriated to the water regular labor account. Same to be transferred from the water support services expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you. We're all done with emergency preambles. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I make an observation?
Please.
We have just handled, I don't know, about 15 or 16 emergency preambles. And if my scorecard's correct, we voted two of them down. One of them is related to the deficiency in our rubbish collection account. And the other one, with respect to some important roadwork. Is it possible that one of the nay votes might want to consider a motion to reconsider?
Hold on one second, please. Okay, we're first, we're gonna take Communication 119. There was a five to four vote.
That's correct.
I'm gonna yield the floor to the majority, which is the four in this particular case here, for reconsideration. Do I have reconsideration on Communication 119? It is not moved. You have another one?
Well, it would be futile. So put me down for Friday night. We'll see you, see you then.
Friday night lights.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to Communication 130. This is not an emergency preamble. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-130, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $2,836 to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aid receipts reserve for appropriation account. First time on the calendar, Mr. President. A regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 130 has been given regular course. We now move on to matters before the city council. We have the City of Lomester financial report. Not gonna get into the budget. If you can just give us an update on numbers, and then we'll take questions later on during the discussion, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. We started the fiscal year on July 1st of 2018 with a balance in our stabilization account of $15,113,865. During the course of the year, we added a number of appropriations, including one proposed this evening for $5,100,000. Without that, what we already voted on and approved would total $4,823,545. With the $5,100,000, the new number, if approved, would be $9,923,545. During the course of the year, we borrowed from the stabilization fund a total of $5,201,295, leaving a balance, if approved, if the $51,000, $5,100,000 appropriation is approved, it would be a balance of $19,836,115.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to finance, beginning with Communication 93. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-93, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $852,565 to the water department capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We had a finance subcommittee meeting on June 18th, Mr. President, and the unanimous recommendation of our committee on that date was to grant C-93. This appropriation is to meet the needs of the Department of Public Works in a number of areas. Let me just get you to that document.
You're just refreshing our memory because we were all present that night. That was a meeting of the whole, correct?
Okay, well, just for the public, I'll go through it real quick. $500,000 of the majority of the money is necessary for the Morse Dam expenses, leaving a balance on that work. The balance of the $852,000, $252,565 of a cost related to replacing filter material at the No Town and Fall Brook water plants with granular activated carbon to approve TOC removal, which, of course, we've had discussions about here previously. And the last $100,000 is for costs related to the water main replacement that's ongoing right now on Merriam Avenue.
Thank you. Any recommendations, sir?
Recommendation is unanimous to grant C-93.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 93. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counselor Schelfel will differ for accusing yourself on this. Thank you. Are there any questions on the floor on Communication 93? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 93 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $852,565 be appropriated to the water department capital outlay expense account. Same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to adopt, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 95. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-95, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $5,100,000 to the stabilization fund, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is a process that we go through each year. During the course of the fiscal year, as I indicated in my report, we bought, we borrowed $5,201,295 from stabilization. This is meant to reconstitute or replenish the account. It's a cash flow and flexibility thing that the city is afforded by having a stabilization count that's properly funded. And it was taken up in our finance subcommittee meeting on the 18th. And the unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-95.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Communication 95. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $5,100,000 be appropriated to the stabilization fund. Same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the council served a positive recommendation on Communication 95. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 96. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-96, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $12,000 to the Mayor's Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. This money is divided into two. Two thousand of it is used, it will be used if passed, to clean, for some final cleaning at the Neusnack Brook to supplement other work that has been done there. And the other $10,000 is to reestablish the Mayor's Ward Counselor Program where each Counselor will be allotted $2,000 to carry forward programs in their individual wards. The Finance Committee met on the 18th and unanimously recommended the passage of C-96.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant Communication 96. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication, excuse me, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $12,000 be appropriated to the Mayor's Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 97. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-97, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $176,608 to the School Department Expense Account, same to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. This is the E-rate reimbursement that goes back to the schools for their program. The Finance Committee met on the 18th and unanimously recommended the passage of C-97.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 97's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $176,608 be appropriated to the School Department Expense Account, same to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 98. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-98, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $130,000 to the Recreation Capital Outlay Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. This is for work on the lights at Fornia Field. There were previous amounts of money taken or incumbent on this particular project from other sources. The total project is $250,000. However, $90,000 of the sum was encumbered from last year's free cash and $30,000 has been carried over and incumbent from this year's Recreation Department Expense Budget, I'm sorry, last year's Recreation Expense Budget. So the additional money, $130,000, is necessary to replace the lights. And the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee on the 18th was to grant C-98.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation right to grant Communication 98. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Cormier, David Cormier?
Just very briefly, I just want to say that I think this is very worthwhile. Most people know we didn't receive a grant, and there's so much needed work to be done there. Actually, some of it is a safety hazard with rod and poles and stuff. So I know it's been a long time coming, and I'm very happy to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of granting Communication 98, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 98 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $130,000 be appropriated to the Recreation Capital Outlay Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Again, are there any further questions or comments on Communication 98? If not, I'm going to do a roll call vote for the positive. Communication 98, Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Ottinger?
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Schellefels-Effer?
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Dombrowski?
Yea.
Thank you. Counselor Frida?
Yea.
I should record as yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Thank you, Counselor. Nine to nothing, communications order has been adopted. Awesome. Nice job, Mayor. We'll now move on to Communication 99. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-99, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $267,373 to the Insurance Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from various workers' compensation loss funds as listed below. Fiscal year 19, $125,000. Fiscal year 18, $75,000. Fiscal year 17, $50,000. Fiscal year 16, $17,373, for a total of $267,373. As the Councilors are aware, these loss funds are created because the city is partially at least self-insured. These monies have been recommended by the insurance company to be released as not required for our reserve any longer. And we have a letter from our Treasurer, David LaPlante, substantiating that. The Finance Committee on June 18th unanimously recommended the passage of C-99.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 99. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 99's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $267,373 be appropriated to the Insurance Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from various workers' compensation loss funds. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 100. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-100, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $67,639 to the Cemetery Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Income Account. And this is broken down, laborer, $36,363; clerk, $16,457; in part-time summer help, $14,546, for a total of $67,639. We had the DPW Director here a meeting or two ago explaining that the program to refurbish the cemetery is ongoing and the necessity for these funds. We had a meeting on the 18th, the Finance Subcommittee did, and the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee with respect to C-100 was not unanimous, but the majority report was to grant C-100.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 100. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to one, the communication has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $67,639 be appropriated to the Cemetery Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Income Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the favorable recommendation on Communication 100. I'll yield the floor for any questions or comments. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of, excuse me?
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of eight to one, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 101. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-101, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $75,000 to the Water Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Water Department Labor Account. This relates to piloting and engineering expenses for the updated treatment at No Town for TOC removal, an issue that of course, the city's been struggling with, which results from organic compounds that need to be filtered out of the water to meet quality requirements of DEP. We met on this, the 18th as well. The unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-101.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed? Counselor Shelfel, Zephyr?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, thank you, abstaining on that. Okay, I'm going to go right back to the drawing board here. Counselor Shelfel, Zephyr will abstain from this. All those in favor of Communication 101, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 101 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $75,000 be appropriated to the Water Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Water Department Labor Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Communication 102, Counselor Shelfel, Zephyr will recuse herself on that as well. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-102, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $65,000 to the Sewer Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Sewer Support Services Expense Account. This relates to engineering costs relative to the wastewater plant clarifier upgrades and replacement. This is what we heard about earlier this evening. The unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, of Finance was to grant C-102.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of granting Communication 102, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 102's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $65,000 be appropriated to the Sewer Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Sewer Support Services Expense Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication 102 has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 103. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-103, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $20,000 to the Police Department Overtime Account, same to be transferred from the Police Department Salary and Wages Account. This appropriation is for retro overtime monies to satisfy the new collective bargaining agreement. The unanimous recommendation of Finance on June 18th was to grant C-103.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 103. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $20,000 be appropriated to the Police Department Overtime Account, same to be transferred from the Police Department Salary and Wages Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Counselor, sir, the recommendation read. I'll yield the floor for any questions or comments. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 103 has been adopted. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 104. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. If I may? Whoa, 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 whoa. If I may, I just, I need to, the record needs to reflect that I'm abstaining from this. I am on the Disability Commission, and I'm the Treasurer of the Commission as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the Chairman for Communication 104. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-104, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $2,721 to the Disability Commission Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Disability Fines Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. This is a pretty regular occurrence here, removing money that was collected in fines to the Disability Commission for their use. The Finance Subcommittee by a two to zero vote based on Counselor David Cormier's abstention is recommending the passage of C-104.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 104. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Feckley?
I just wanted to make one comment. I have been on the Disability Commission, so I want to commend Counselor Cormier and the Commission for this. They've been working on this for, I think, a couple of years. And what they are going to be doing is spending this money to, for assistive technology for the library.
Thank you.
So I think that's very commendable.
Nice comment. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to comment on Communication 104? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have a report?
The order is, Mr. President, that the sum of $2,721 be appropriated to the Disability Commission Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Disability Fines Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read. On Communication 104, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does anyone need a break?
No.
Oh, my God.
Need air conditioning, I can tell you that.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to move on to, we're going to have reconsideration on Friday night as well, again, if we have to. Okay. Communication 105, is the Chairman ready to report?
C-105, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $6,000 to the Parking Meter Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Parking Meter Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. Again, you know, this was the accounts intended for, to move money over as the fines are collected to necessary expenses relating to the parking program. The recommendation of Finance on C-105 was unanimous to grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 105. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, so what did the sum of $6,000 be appropriated to the Parking Meter Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Parking Meeting Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the Counsel, sir, the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 106. Are you ready to report?
Yes, C-106, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $6,000 to the Parking Meter Salary and Wages Account, same amount to be transferred from the Parking Meter Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. Same, similar to the last communication, this one of course, is for salary and wages as opposed to expenses, but same sort of idea, we're transferring collected fines, or parking meter receipts rather, to salary and wages account for the parking program. The unanimous recommendation of Finance was to grant C-106.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yeah, what did the sum of $6,000 be appropriated to the Parking Meter Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Parking Meter Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 107. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-107, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $200,000 to be made to the Sewer Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. I believe these matters were for I&amp;I study costs, $120,000. That's to determine how much groundwater is infiltrating from, from storm drainage into our sewer system, which is mandated by DEP. And the other $80,000 is for a sewer truck replacement. The unanimous recommendation of Finance was to grant C-107.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to Counselor Shelfel, Zephyr first?
Yes, thank you very much. I am abstaining from this.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor for Communication 107? Counselor Feckley?
The Chair to the Finance.
Please, go ahead.
Did we ever get any information on the sewer truck?
I, I would check with the clerk. I'm not sure if, we did not? No.
The cost of the sewer truck?
Well, no, not the cost, did we say an estimate or?
Well, I estimate, of course, is what they requested, but...
A written estimate.
For, for the truck itself and all of its outfiting? No.
I mean, I'm going to support this, but can we have this for...
I, I would ask that the DPW provide it to us, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor?
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All those, are there any other questions on the floor on Communication 107? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to grant, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $200,000 be appropriated to the Sewer Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 108. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor?
This one as well, I'll be abstaining. I have a family member on the Fire Department.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor David Cormier on that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-108, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $45,000 be made to the Fire Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from Excess and Deficiency. This is for the hiring and training of a firefighter. This is due to short staff. I get, I guess you have a couple of issues with people out on long-term disability, et cetera. And the unanimous recommendation of the remaining Finance Committee members, two to zero, was to grant C-108.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 108. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. An order that the sum of $45,000 be appropriated to the Fire Department Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 109. Counselor Schellof-Zephyr?
Yes, I will be abstaining from C-109.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'll yield the floor to the chairman for a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-109, Dean J. Mazzarello, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $425,341 to the cap, to be made to the wastewater capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. The unanimous recommendation of finance on C-109 was to grant, the vast majority of the money is for relining and, or replacement, rather, of the Crawford Street line. That's $300,000. The other $125,341 is for manhole repair and replacement. There was a question at our subcommittee meeting if there could be a list of the manholes. There was a response from the business office of the DPW that most of the manholes in question were relative to the North Street project. I'm sure there were others, there will be others throughout the city, but that was the vast majority of them. And again, the unanimous recommendation of finance was to grant C-109.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant Communication 109. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. We want it that the sum of $425,341 be appropriated to the wastewater capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation to grant. Communication 109, or adopt the order. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to noth, excuse me, eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Okay, we're going to deal with the budget now. Communication 110. I'm going to deal directly with the finance chair with a question I have for you. We, the communication went out last week to members of the council to have an opportunity to gather and hunt for information necessary to be able to make a decision tonight. So, the colleagues had a chance to go through the mayor's office or through the mayor's office to specific department heads if they had any questions. The mayor is here tonight with his staff, Mr. Chairman. Would you like him and his staff to come in to answer any direct questions that may still be outstanding in lieu of having to recess if necessary? Or do you want to just waive that and go forward?
I think what I would like to do is check with members of my committee for a recommendation first, after, of course, reading the communication. Then I, with all, with respect to the council president, at that point, I would like to be heard on whatever our recommendation is.
You will.
And then, of course, you will take it from there and open it up to the council. I, there, obviously, the mayor and comptroller and other department heads are present.
Right.
If during the, if during the discussion, questions come up that you deem, you deem in your judgment should be answered or need to be answered, I'll leave with your sound discretion.
Okay, very good.
So, let me read.
So, I'm going to yield the floor to the chairman of finance right now, who's going to make a recommendation on Communication 110.
C-110, Dean J. Mazzarello, Mayor. Request that $129,900,000 be appropriated to the general fund budget as listed in the attached budget, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. We did have this on our agenda on the 18th, the finance subcommittee agenda. Of course, we reached no conclusion on it that date because we hadn't had the public hearing. We had a public hearing on the budget earlier tonight. Mr. President, would be my recommendation to grant C-110, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
I'll yield the floor to the third member who will be recusing himself from the fire department salary and wages, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I do agree with granting C-110, and I just need to disclose that I'm also the chairman, I'm sorry, the disability commission treasurer. So, any and all items for the disability commission, I'll be abstaining from, as well as the fire department's, any salary, wages, benefits for the fire department, I need to abstain from as well.
Thank you.
Other than that, I totally agree with granting C-110.
Thank you. We do have a recommendation from the finance committee. Before we move forward, I'm going to recuse myself with two members of my immediate family working in the school department. Does anyone else need the floor on any matter? Counselor Schellof-Zephyr?
I'd like to recuse myself on the water and sewer budgets.
Okay, done so. Anyone else, Counselor Frida?
I don't think I need to, but I'll just disclose, I'm a director for the MMA, and we're voting on the dues, so we set those dues.
Okay, all right. Good checkpoint on that. Any others? Okay, thank you. We have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman. Please requalify.
Yes, the unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C-110.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard their recommendation read. The ground rules for the debate or the discussion is basically to seek and gather information to help each one of you to be able to make a determination or qualify your own vote, which I respect. I'm first going to yield the floor to the chairman of finance for his position on this. Mr. Chairman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A budget is only one part of the city's financial structure, but of course, it's a very important part. And I, I feel that there is no possibility of having a budget that's perfect. We all know that. There, the definition of economy is to balance unlimited wants and needs versus limited resources. And of course, every city and town in Massachusetts has to do that. I think there's much to celebrate in that, in that budget. I think our city in general is really at a zenith. When you can be in the position that we are, and that is to receive an A-plus grade from the respected pioneer institute relative to our pension standing, the only A-plus grade granted by that research institute in the entire state out of 107 systems because we reached full funding is a laudable step that our taxpayers sacrificed for, all of our citizens sacrificed for. We should be very proud of that. At the same time, we have a stabilization fund that is nearly $20 million, which is the envy of many systems in the state. We have met our 15% floor or ceiling, as recommended by Moody's. 15% of our budget is made up in stabilization. To put this in every, in a parlance that every person that has a home budget can understand, if you're making $50,000 a year, 15% of your revenue or your income would be $7,500. That's not a whole lot of savings against that type of situation. We need that money. We use it creatively. We use it for capital needs throughout the year, as we've just saw earlier this evening. It's a good position to be in. We are addressing our capital needs. We are addressing significant capital needs with respect to the police department and the athletic field behind the high school without a tax increase. We are doing that by retiring other bonds, notably the library. We are going to ultimately retire a bonds relating to roof projects that were done at JA, Johnny Appleseed School, Northwest School. We are, we are paying a $45 million bond on renovations to the high school. We're in a good position with respect to our public buildings. We are addressing a myriad of other capital needs, from fire trucks to pickup trucks and everything in between. We have leveraged millions of dollars in state and federal grants to the credit of the mayor's finance team and particularly Wendy Weeks. We have well-funded departments. No, they don't get everything they want. You know, every department has needs. We heard the police chief say that the FBI study really would require another 20 or 25 police officers in Leominster. Would we love to be able to afford that? Of course we would. But we can't meet every single need or every single want that's out there. But we're doing a good job, I think, with the needs that have been presented. And we are saving a lot of money with respect to bonds. Because of our credit rating, we're saving a lot of money on our pension program. We're going to ultimately save a lot of money with OPEB, tens of millions of dollars that will be city services as opposed to paying interest on an overdue obligation. All of this with an excess levy capacity of 5.5%. To put, to put that out there so the public can understand it, yes, we go to two and a half every year. Almost every community in Massachusetts does that. But we could go in one tax year, five and a half percent more than that. Find me a community with a $20 million stabilization account that has a fully funded pension system, that has 5.5% excess levy capacity. I want to see one person find me that community. It doesn't exist. And moreover, Leominster has a proud history, and we need to celebrate and tout that proud history. It dates back many years. It dates back nearly a century to 1926, when Mae Gallego was built, a junior high school that was the envy of the entire state. It was the premier junior high school built in the state at the time. At the same time, Mayor Doyle improved and enlarged the Nottown Reservoir. We were just completing a needed and new hospital. We were making plans to build Doyle Field, all at the same time. So, we have a custom and tradition of this. It is important, I think, for all of us, and not only as elected officials, but members of the public, to understand the proud heritage of this city. It goes way back. It goes, it goes back to the sports fields that we play on. It goes back to the way we finance our budgets, the way we save. This is a city that is unique and beyond compare. I'd like to think back to a year in 1933, at the nadir of the depression, when this city was struggling with Works Progress Association grants and WPA grants, and conservatively making things work. And Quincy was stated, was going to come in here and play a football game, and the Boston newspaper said, Quincy at Leominster, not worth the drive. And CB, as he was affectionately known, Charlie Broderick, told his players, how do they know what's in your heart? How do they know what your capacity is? You don't even know what your capacity is. Leominster went to that football field and beat Quincy 46 to nothing. That's how Leominster gets things done. That's how Leominster has always got things done. I'm proud to support this budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other members of finance who wish to weigh in, first of all? Counselor David Cormier?
Thank you very much. Yes, I do support this budget, and I totally agree. I am not 100% happy with it. You know, I hear from people all the time that want tax relief. I mean, it's, you know, people are struggling, you know, and taxes aren't the only thing going up, and it is tough for people, you know. But on the same token, you know, I think we have made a little bit of progress with our schools, where I know it's not going to be done the way everybody would like it, but at the end of the day, the schools are going to receive the funding that they requested. We've given pension increases to our retirees this year. That's been a major problem for a good decade now. We were holding back on that. You know, this year, we had a couple of roads accepted that were unaccepted streets for many years, and there's more of them on the horizon. So, you know, the, I see a lot of progress. And, you know, the tax increases, a lot of it's going to the schools, and, you know, we're certainly not wasting what we increase and what we, what we collect. So, we can't, we can't look at all this progress and, you know, have a tax cut and then just take everything, all the progress we made, and, you know, just set it on fire and regress back. You know, I think, I think we're doing good, and I certainly wouldn't want to see that progress change. So, if I could have it my way, we wouldn't raise taxes so much, but we'd still be doing everything we're doing. And we all know that that is not reality. It doesn't work that way. You can't, you can't cut, you know, cut spending, but yet make progress and get things done. So, I do, I do wholeheartedly support the budget. I think that we will do some great things in the next fiscal year. I'm sure we'll have some challenges, but I'm sure that we can muscle through them however we have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pauline Cormier, you have the floor to you.
Just briefly, I just want to echo what Counselor Cormier stated was, and I'm sure the ward counselors and all the counselors, the number one complaint we have is why do our taxes keep going up every year? Why is there $19 million in this account and our taxes are going up? And, and you heard all the reasons why, and they're basically today. And you heard all the reasons why, you heard where the money's going. Again, I agree, we have some issues. We do things really well in the city. I think we can do a little bit better. And, and, and I don't mean to any particular department, but there's some areas in the city with some tax relief. We've got elderly people that are holding on to their homes by the skin of their teeth. We've got corporations who are buying every multifamily in the community. I see it in my neighborhood. We're losing the, the long-term families that have been there for 50 and 60 years. They're, they're losing their houses because of the tax rate. We all understand why. We all understand that we, we need to, we need to maintain what we have. We need to look to the future, but I still think we can do a little bit better. And that's what I hope that we'll see over the next few years.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll now yield the floor to the members of the council for any comments or questions? Nothing? Okay. All those in favor of the recommendation to grant, Communication 1, C-110. This will be a roll call vote, excuse me.
Yep, sorry. I do have some comments.
Oh, okay. I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
No, it went up.
Okay, let's do this over. I'm going to yield the floor to Counselor Schellof-Zephyr for any questions or comments or a statement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You know, I wish that I could support this budget wholeheartedly and feel really great and good about it. I think that there are some good things in here that I have supported over the years. I have supported putting money into stabilization. I have supported the OPEB contributions as well. However, I think we need to do a better job with our public schools. And in, in thinking about the amount of money, because when people hear all the millions of dollars that we spend on schools, it's really important that they understand 60% of those dollars come from the state. That's taxpayer money, and I'm not, you know, you know, poo-pooing that in any way. That's serious money, but it is state money. So, when you say the schools have gotten a $3 million increase in this year's budget, yes, they have. You know, health insurance benefits cost a lot of money when you have a lot of employees in a system, and teachers, and paras, and administrators, and everybody who works in the school department day in and day out. It costs money to pay them, it costs money for their benefits. So, out of that $3 million, 1.8 is coming from the state. I think people really need to understand that. And when you hear people talk about $400,000 over net school spending, $1 million over net school spending, $250,000 over net school spending, I spent time today on the Department of Education's website. It's accessible, it's very straightforward, it's really easy to understand. And dollars really don't tell the story. You need to compare communities by looking at the percentage that communities spend over net school spending. And it's an easy thing to do. You click on the link at the top, and it will actually organize and sort communities by the percentage over net school spending that they contribute in their budget. So, regardless, you know, the process, I thought, was a mess again this year. We don't even have a budget book, even for future records, for public record purposes, that accurately reflects what the school department asked for. I had asked for an amended budget, I didn't get one. I think that's important as a matter of public record. However, you know, with that said, so I think we can do a better job, I think we should do a better job. We are a gateway city. We are a gateway city. We have lower-than-average incomes, we have higher socio-economically disadvantaged people in the community, and we have lower-than-average educational levels. This is something that we need to address, and the way to do that is really through funding, supporting, and working to make the Leominster Public Schools the best that they can be. I think a community with $19 million stabilization ready to defund, I think that's great. I've supported it, I've supported the transfers in and out. I think that's very, very important. However, however, there is money, I have 12 years' worth of free cash estimates, not estimates, this is actually, these are free cash, certified free cash. I take out the water and the sewer expense, and then you have a net free cash, which is really available for one-time expenditures. You know, over the years, that number has gone from 5, 4 million up to 7.6 million, for a total of, you know, almost $58 million in free cash after water and sewer expenses have gone back into their budget. The city of Leominster, thank you very much taxpayers, which is really where the celebration should be, because they're the ones that have footed all of this good stuff, right? They're the ones that have built up that stabilization account. They're the ones who are supporting the school system, 40% of that school system's cost. They're the ones that are supporting our retirees, as well as the retirees themselves. So, I think that, you know, I think tax relief is a very important thing. My preference would be really to invest more in the school department. I think we should do a budget that is, is something that the school department submits that is reasonable, and that we actually approve that, rather than nickel and dime and go back and forth and fight over transportation. I can't believe the amount of time and energy that we, and the school department, and the mayor's office and comptroller, have spent arguing about the minimum level acceptable by the state to fund our schools at. That's what we've been fighting about. What is the minimum level that we can get to so that we can satisfy that net school spending number? I mean, in a city like Leominster, that we are all very proud of, and have, you know, lived and worked here for our whole lives, I mean, can't we do better than that? I think we can. And as far as, you know, I think people are overtaxed. I really do. I think a 1.9, $1.9 million, two and a half percent increase this year, is that really necessary? We've got $5.9 million, this is another thing. People paying off the pension, long-term liability, that, that's a good thing, right? But that debt was accumulated over a lot of years. And what we've done with this generation of taxpayers is say, hey, you, we're going to make you responsible for paying all of this back and paying it early. And, oh, by the way, we are going to save you millions and millions of dollars. Well, we have saved the millions of dollars. There's $5.9 million in there that is the difference between the last year's required contribution and this year's required contribution. So, in looking at that, I think we should look at the taxpayers and say, you know what? Thank you very much for funding, for making us one of the first communities in the state. And I'd like to look at those other communities, if we're first in the state, I'd like to see how they balance their competing interests, what they actually do spend on schools, and how they do manage to put together a school department budget, and they do manage to pay off some of their long-term liability. So, that's, that's my two cents. I think that, thank you very much, every single taxpayer in the city of Leominster, they have more, more than contributed their fair share to running the city. And they're the ones that should be celebrated and congratulated, especially this one generation. We can talk about saving millions and millions of dollars. When are these taxpayers going to see that? A lot of them won't be around. We can defer that, you know, when, when will they see some tax relief? When will they see some of those savings?
We don't have any debate going on right now with the audience. You're making a statement, so, let's keep it, I know, I understand, but let's keep it here.
Absolutely, I am, because I'm addressing some of the things that you have said earlier.
All right. Counselor Schellof-Zephyr, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I go through, I can, I can continue later on. I mean, I'm done for now.
Okay, thank you. Any other councils that haven't had a chance to speak? Counselor Frida?
I wish I could support this budget tonight. For me, I'm disappointed and frustrated that every year it becomes adversarial, and it shouldn't be that way. I've sat through 33 budgets, eight or nine superintendents, I'm not even sure, a number of finance directors with the school department. I don't know what it would take for everybody to get on the same page. We are in a good position. We are proud of the city. We have everything to be proud of. I was in the room when we celebrated the retirement level funding, of bringing it up to date. And with that, thinking that that $6 million might give a little bit more to the community. And with that, thinking that that $6 million might give a little bit more to the community. I know we have to do OPEB, I know that's the next line, but do we have to do $5 million in OPEB? Can we do 2 million? Give us some more to the schools. I guess my frustration is because this was a year I thought, if there was ever a year that we could do something, this would be the year to do it. Total between free cash, growth, or even take growth out of it, you want to take the growth, or put the growth in and take the tax levy out of it. We're talking about $15 million of money that it is not IMAC that we can use. And that's taking water and sorrel. Couldn't we do a little more? If we don't want to give it to the schools, can we give us some to the taxpayer? Give them a little relief for one year that we have so much more this year than we have in other years. And as far as getting into a difficulty, as the counselor across from me said, to have crash and burn, that's what we have a stabilization account for. If we do have a bad year of taxes, that's what we have a stabilization account for emergencies. So I guess my big thing is, A, somehow we need to get a budget of free cash numbers a little bit sooner. I don't like listening to public comment tonight on June 24th and have no opportunity. If we had a lot more people here tonight, and we might get phone calls tomorrow after people watch, we don't have an opportunity to have that in between the comments and the time we vote, because we're voting on the same night. One meeting in between, I'd be happy with, just so that we have that ability. So I guess I'm frustrated and disappointed, and I hope we can find a way to not be adversarial, whether it's the school department sitting with the comptroller, or somehow have a mediator if you even need one, but somehow get on the same page so everybody can talk and do something that will provide adequate public safety and educate another generation of our kids. I think we need to do a better job in that regard. But should every kid be happy growing up in this city? There's a lot for them to do. The mayor mentioned the parks, the downtown activities, and everybody has the ball doing those. Those are the same kids we're talking about educating. Let's balance that a little bit. Let's have a better give and take, and let's see if we can put something together.
Thank you very much. Any councils that haven't had a chance to speak? Do you have any comments or questions? Counsel Dobrowski?
Yeah, I think the beauty and the paradox of, my son keeps calling me. I think the beauty and the paradox of government, you know, is everybody's right. I mean, that's, it's about priorities, you know, and there's nobody who has said anything here that's wrong. Everybody's right. Counsel Frida brought up the fact to me earlier that I have voted against the budget more than any sitting counselor, which is true. And the main reason I voted against the budget is I have felt that we weren't paying enough to the schools. You know, and I voiced that. But I think there's been a lot of improvement in that regard. And you can't discount that improvement. And I understand, I understand the school department. They get the most money. They're independent largely of the administration, and they have to advocate for themselves. If they ask, if they ask for 10 and we give them 10, they're going to want 12, because that's the nature of the beast. And that's what they should be doing. And I think that in the last three, four years, you know, the school administration has been vigilant, the parents have been vigilant, they've been down here, the educators have been vigilant. And there's been a lot of improvement. And because of that, I am going to support the budget tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councils that didn't have a chance to weigh in? Would you like to speak? If not, Mr. Chairman, I want you to requalify again your recommendation from committee.
The, I don't know if you want to recognize?
Yes, I'm going to go right back to Counsel Shalfo Zephyr. If you have anything you want to add to it, go ahead.
I do, I do, yeah. Actually, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to reduce line item 356 by $950,000. And what that represents is half of a 2.5% increase in taxes. I think that $5.9 million, which is in there, is a real savings, and I think passing on a little bit of that to the taxpayers who have been pounded over the last few years, I think would be a smart thing to do. So I would move that that line item number 356 in the budget book be reduced by 950,000.
Counselor, the recommendation read, the line item 356 is reduced to 950,000, is reduced by $950,000.
Right.
Do we have a second on the floor on that motion? Second has been made by Counselor Feckley. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counsel Bonanza?
Comments? Well, we have the jurisdiction to cut it. We don't have the jurisdiction to allocate it or appropriate it. So if that money goes, it's gone. You will recall from the public informational meetings that I conducted as a finance chair that the mayor publicly at a school committee meeting in May indicated that when the final reserve requirement for the pensions is determined, that the schools could receive as much as $1.3 million from their share of the 5.9. That 5.9 represents all of the departments, including the school's share. School's share is roughly about 30%, or 1.8 million of that 5.9 million. If we, as the comptroller has said, no one yet knows what the reserve requirement is going to be to stay 100% funded until sometime after the close of the calendar year, because the investment experience that will determine what the reserve requirement is can't be assessed until we know what the gains or losses of the system were for calendar year 2019, and the actuarial report is determined for calendar year 2019. We have employees that retire, we have employees that die, we have a fluctuation in what those actuarial requirements are. Those two things have to be closed out to determine how much of that 5.9 million that is reserved is necessary to continue our full pension funding. Once that number is established, it is likely that there will be money left over to be appropriated or re-appropriated that the mayor will send before us to appropriate and will have a stake in. The mayor, as again I said, publicly indicated he would support that the school's share of that. Now, if there is a reserve requirement, that reserve requirement, I'll just use an example, these aren't numbers that anyone knows, but if out of that 1.8 million, it was determined that over and above the school's normal costs, which are already in the budget on another line item, of $670,000, if there was an additional reserve requirement of 600 grand, let's say, that was the school's responsibility, that would free $1.2 million of that reserve number for reappropriation. The mayor is publicly committed to using that for schools, and that, I would suggest, would end up being a net school spending eligible item. So all of it would be net school spending eligible, because obviously the reserve requirement, the pension requirement, and the normal costs would be counted towards net school spending. And anything used for net school spending items over and above that reserve number would be net school spending eligible, in addition to some of the other appropriations that are on agenda tonight. To hamstring the city and take some of that money away, we have no authority over re-appropriating that money. That's not our authority. But I would want to be a part of that process. Once it's determined what, in fact, the requirement is, so we can stay fully funded, then we're going to have a say in that process. And to take money out of that process with no guarantee whatsoever where it's going to go, if it's going to go anywhere, that could end up in free cash next year if it doesn't get appropriated. I just don't think that's a wise thing to do. So I am 100% opposed to the motion that's on the floor.
We have any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, this will be a roll call vote. All those in favor of cutting line item 356 by $950,000 will indicate by saying yea, beginning with Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Excuse me?
Yea.
Yea. Counsel Dobrowski?
Nay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Feckley?
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza?
Nay.
Counsel Ottinger?
Nay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Nay.
Counsel David Cormier?
Nay.
I shall record as nay by a vote of 6 to 3. It is denied. Thank you. I'm going to yield the floor back. Are there any other motions on the floor? I'm going to yield the floor back to Communication 111 to the chairman. Excuse me, 110.
Excuse me, on the rule 32, your rule?
Absolutely. The mayor's going to address the council right now?
Thank you.
You're welcome, anytime.
And thank you for availing me the opportunity, and a good discussion tonight, that's what it's all about. That's fruitful and helpful, and that's, as Counsel Dobrowski said, that's what the process is all about. And just, I don't know what graphs, I know people like to use graphs, everybody likes to use those things. And only a couple of months ago, we had a, the mayor's association had a meeting with a couple of senators that are really pushing this foundation budget, and I have to say, they are right on. I mean, they've spent a lot of time working on this. They asked for a show of hands about who meets the minimum net school spending. We always talk about the minimum level. Hardly any hand in the room went up. They're just sneaking by on their minimum requirement. Just sneaking by on their minimum requirement. There are communities right now who, you know, decided to go with some gimmicks, and they're in trouble. The Department of Revenue has now stepped into those communities. There's one community that's using free cash this year just to provide a level service budget and then less than that. And so they've reached into their free cash. They're in trouble next year already. This year, 1.5 million, next year, there'll be $3 million in trouble. And that will just continue on. I just want to go over, we keep talking about giving the schools more, and I thought we were giving the schools more. And the one missing point, on top of the 3.8 million, Counselor, that the school department will have to spend, starting July 1st, is still the undetermined amount of money that is going to come from the state when they pass their budget. Now, we don't know what that amount is going to be, but based on what we've heard, you know, it should be, it could be pretty substantial. That would put them over $4 million. And if you think that last year's budget went up 1.6 million, isn't that a sizable increase? I would suspect that's a sizable increase. We talk about, well, the schools aren't getting enough. I get it. They have the same expenses that we do. There are, they have been level, the level amount of students hasn't really grown, it's gone up 25, down 10, up 11. And we still continue to fund them. And we don't look at what's our net school spending, we look at what their needs are, and we do the best that we can. Let's take it another step further. 29% of the free cash this year went back to the schools. Went back to the schools. When the same state senators were in the room, and I asked the question about what's your percentage of your budget? And remember, I pay state taxes, I pay federal, everybody does. It's tax money. And I asked, what's the percentage that they spend on schools? Everybody was lower than 65% of their budget. Every single community, including the gateway communities. So I hope that clears that up. I think we are, we're going from 1.7 to possibly over $4 million in new money. That is not only substantial, but if you add the two together, it's more of an increase than we've done in the last two years, in the last two years. Then add what we've given and provided for stabilization, add that. And add transportation, it doesn't count towards net school spending. Add debt service, that doesn't count towards net school spending. And we probably give more money to the school department in percentage than most other school systems in the state, when you figure it out that way. And we are a gateway community. So I hope that straightens that out, but thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Council's now back in session here. I'm going to yield the floor again back to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will reiterate, the MS recommendation of the finance committee is to grant C-110.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, that recommendation, requalify. We're going to do a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Claire Frida.
Nay.
Counsel John Dobrowski?
Nay.
Counsel Susan Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Counsel Gil Feckley?
Nay.
Counsel Mark Bonanza?
Yea.
Counsel Frank Ottinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall record as yea by a vote of, what do we have, 6 to 3?
6 to 3.
The budget is passed. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $129,900,000 be appropriated to the general fund budget as listed in the attached budget, same amount to be appropriated from fiscal year 2020 revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read. Are there any further comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I'm going to ask again for that vote, I didn't hear one Counselor. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of 7 to 2, Counsel Frida is in the favorable on that, 7 to 2. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 111. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-111, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested a total appropriation of $5,878,722.75 be made to the fiscal year 2020 Water Department budget, the same amount to be raised/offset by fiscal year 2020 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. This, of course, is the Water Department, or proposed Water Department budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The finance committee met on the 18th of June, and unanimously, let me find that, unanimously, I'm sorry, no, there was no recommendation, Mr. President, because this was on for public hearing tonight. Excuse me. I would ask you to check with members of my committee. My position would be to support C-111.
Before I begin, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes.
You want to recuse yourself on, okay. She will recuse herself on this? Thank you. Okay, I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, third member.
I also agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The MS recommendation of finance is to grant C-111.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read, to grant Communication 111. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of 8 to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $5,878,722.75 be appropriated to the fiscal year 2020 Water Department budget, same to be raised/offset by fiscal year 2020 receipts as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, their recommendation read. Are there any final comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of 8 to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're now moved to Communication 112. Are you ready to report?
Yes. C-112, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested a total appropriation of $5,655,895.44 be made to the fiscal year 2020 Sewer Department budget, same amount to be raised/offset by fiscal year 2020 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. We had a public hearing on this this evening. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-112. I'll ask you to check with members of my committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to Counsel Shalfo Zephyr first.
Thank you very much, I will abstain from voting on this.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Counsel Cormier.
I agree.
Third member?
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. President. The MS recommendation of finance is to grant C-112.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read, to grant Communication 112. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of 8 to nothing, Communication 112 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $5,655,895.44 be appropriated to the fiscal year 2020 Sewer Department budget, same to be raised/offset by fiscal year 2020 receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, their recommendation read. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of 8 to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're moving on to page 8. We have Communication 113. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-113, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $123,000 be made to the miscellaneous capital outlay expense account as listed, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This involves the purchase of two pickup trucks, one for the recreation department, the other one for the DPW. This was a part of our recommendation on June 18th. Finance committee made a unanimous recommendation to grant C-113.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of 9 to nothing, Communication 113 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $123,000 be appropriated to the miscellaneous capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard their recommendation. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 114. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. I'm going to make a, I'm going to ask for a motion to amend C-114 to transfer the $664,350 to the school transportation account as opposed to the school department expense account, because that's where it's intended to go.
Is a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Councilor Frida. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those approved, excuse me, approved. Approved, guys.
Long night.
That's got to be a blooper somewhere. All those opposed, thank you. It has been amended. Does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-114 has amended, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $664,350 be made to the school department transportation account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Unanimous recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee was to grant C-114. This is to make good on a promise the mayor made last year to fund the differential in the school transportation account between what the school committee was anticipating spending and what was appropriated in that budget last year. I understand that it's still going to be a little short, but hopefully this goes a long way to addressing that need. Again, it would be, it is unanimous recommendation of finance to grant C-114.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard the recommendation read, to grant Communication 114 as amended. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have a, an order?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $664,350 be appropriated to the school department transportation account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard their recommendation read. Again, I'll yield the floor for any questions or comments. If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted on Communication 114. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 115. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-115, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $461,337 be made to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This was a closeout from fiscal year 2018 that the mayor has re-appropriated or proposed to be re-appropriated for school department use in their expense account. The Finance Committee considered this on June 18th and made a unanimous recommendation to grant C-115.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard the recommendation read, to grant Communication 115. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 115 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $461,337 be appropriated to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard their recommendation read. Are there any further comments or questions on Communication 115? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Go spend some money, you guys. Have fun.
It's already spent.
I'm sure.
It's already spent. Well, at least you'll sleep well tonight. Thanks for all your help, guys, and everyone involved. But now, Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss without thanking you.
Well, thank you for the cooperation of all the councilors. Thanks very much.
It's been the most work I've seen in 22 years on this budget, from my seat. So, everybody worked hard on it, so thank you very much for dissecting it, challenging it, and coming up with.
Team effort, all the way.
Absolutely. We're now going to move on to Legal Affairs. We have Councilor Dobrowski, the Chairman, 59-19. Are you ready to report, Counselor?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 59-19, Techner Apex Company located at 31 Fuller Street, request to amend flammable liquids license from 30,000 gallons to 60,000 gallons. We had a public hearing. I'd remind the Council that the applicant did show up, explained why they were making the change, and also that we had favorable recommendations from the Fire Department, who has to inspect this annually and issue an annual permit, as well as the Board of Health, not the Board of Health, the Health Agent, both of whom were favorable. My recommendation is to grant petition 59-19, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree with that.
Thank you, third member.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to grant petition 59-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard a recommendation read, to grant 59-19. Are there any questions on the floor or comments? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger.
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yay.
Councilor Feckley.
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
I shall record as yay by a vote of nine to nothing, 59-19 has been granted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Committee. We'll now move on to 60-19. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 60-19, Georgia Pacific Consumer Operations LLC for Dixie Consumer Products, located at 149 Hamilton Street, request to amend flammable liquids license from 17,067 gallons to 21,967 gallons. Again, the applicant was down here tonight, explained the reason for the requested increase, and we had favorable opinions from the Fire Department and the Health Agent. My recommendation is to grant petition 60-19, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I support that.
Thank you. Third member?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant petition 60-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard the recommendation read, to grant 60-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger.
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yay.
Councilor Feckley.
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
I record by a vote of nine to nothing, 60-19 has been granted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move to 61-19. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am. Petition 61-19, Raymond Racine, DPW Director, requests that the City Council amend the city ordinances to reclassify the position of water specialist into the position code enforcer and change the salary grade from an S5 to an S7. We have a public hearing that's required, that's scheduled for July 8th, 2019, at 6:35 PM, so the recommendation is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard the recommendation read, for further time on petition 64-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 92. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I think it's 64-19, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem. Petition 64-19, Mark C. Bonanza Esquire, relative to amend Section 13-34 of the revised ordinance for the City of Leominster. We have a required public hearing on July 8th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. The recommendation at this point is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard the recommendation read, for further time on 64-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Bonanza.
I'm seeing I'm the author of this, and it's, the way it's phrased, I don't know anybody in the public would understand what this is. It is to eliminate a, one of two no parking zones that start at the intersection of Central and Union. There's two of them there in the ordinance book, and this petition seeks to eliminate one of them. So I think this needs to be amended, so people will know what they're, what we're advertising for a public hearing.
You want to amend it right now?
Yeah.
Or you want to just?
Yeah, I think we should.
Go ahead.
Because we're going to establish a public hearing on what.
Great idea.
So my motion would be to amend the petition by suggesting that its object is to eliminate one of two parking zones that run southerly from the intersection of Central and Union Street. There's one, I think, that's 55 feet, and that's one that's 250 feet or something like that.
Okay, so coming into that.
I think it's sufficient if it says it's to eliminate one of them.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion for an amendment. Do I have a second on the floor?
Second that.
Counselor Feckley had her hand up first, thank you.
It's okay, I yield to Counselor Cormier.
Okay, Counselor Cormier, there you go. Ward Counselor.
Thank you.
Oh, God. Take credit for that, Counselor.
And chickens, too.
Let's have a little ribbon-cutting ceremony there. Okay, referred a recommendation for an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, are there any questions?
Can I just make sure I go?
You go ahead. Clerk's going to read it back to you.
Eliminate one parking zone that runs southerly on Union Street.
One of two existing no parking zones running southerly along Union Street from the intersection of Central and Union.
We'll double-check that afterwards as well. Okay. Council's heard the recommendation for an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the amendment's been made. I'll yield the floor back to the Chairman on 64-19.
Yeah. Due to the public hearing scheduled for July 8th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, the amended petition, the request is for further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council's heard the recommendation read, for further time on 64-19 as amended. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counselor Frida.
Through the chair, to the Legal Affairs Chair. This, did we have this already set? Was this published?
Let's ask the clerk on that.
Hasn't been published yet.
Okay, so we can amend it. Not set yet, okay.
Okay, good question.
I'll say, Counselor. Okay, Counselor, you have the floor.
Did we vote on the further time?
No, we amended it, so you're making a recommendation for further time.
Okay, recommendation is further time for 64-19.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Council's heard the recommendation read, for further time as amended on 64-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to 64-19 as amended. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 92. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Communication 92, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request to amend Title V, Chapter 33, Section 59A, Brave Act. I think this is really a request for us to adopt this section. I ask maybe someone for clarification.
I would imagine it is.
Yeah.
Right. Do we need further language read on that?
I defer, Counselor Frida's been around for a while, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And my other member, Counselor Bonanza.
Yep, I'm fine with it.
So I would, I think just, we'd amend Communication 92 to strike amend and insert adopt. That would be my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's, there's been a motion made to amend, it's seconded by Counselor Bonanza. Any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication 92 has been amended. Hold on one second.
We already adopted it in December of last year.
We adopted it in December of last year.
Yes, in 2018.
Yeah.
Then the state came out with some amendments to the.
Right into the mic.
Oh, sorry. We adopted this in December of 2018, at the end of December, and then we did the original wording that the state came out with, and then the state updated their wording, so they're just trying to have it reflect what the state's updates have.
Okay. So we need to adopt the amended version?
Yes.
We need to amend or adopt?
Adopt the state's.
Adopt the state's amended version.
Right.
Yeah. So I think it can stand as is.
We went back to the drawing board, as is.
Yeah.
Correct. You want to retract your motion?
No, no.
No, the motion's still valid.
The motion is to adopt.
It.
Okay.
That's what we have to do.
Adopt as amended.
Adopt the new.
The new. Gotcha, okay. So we're there. So again, the recommendation is?
My, I mean, this is, this is a statute that just tries to make sure that, you know, employees of the Commonwealth who are serving their country in various capacities don't lose benefits, don't lose seniority, and to some extent, get their full pay. My recommendation, particularly where we've already adopted it, so my recommendation would be to grant, I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk. Thank you, third member.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. I'll yield the floor to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means and Veterans Affairs, if you agree to this.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Frida.
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counselor Schelfer.
Yea.
Counselor Fekley.
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication ninety-two has been adopted.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We're now move on to Ways and Means on page nine, we have Communication ninety-four, is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication ninety-four is the mayor's asking us to approve the CDBG Budget Action Plan for year forty-five. We had Ms. Ellen Racine and the mayor down here this evening to discuss this program with us. This is something that we do every year. Our total funding allocation for this year is four hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and three. That total, sixty-seven thousand three hundred will go towards public services. The rest will be planning, administration, code enforcement, economic development, small businesses, housing rehab. The mayor indicated some of the uses of this money over the years, been very beneficial to homeowners in the city of Leominster, so my recommendation would be to approve the CDBG Budget Action Plan for year forty-five, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Take care, you have the floor to Counselor Frida, the clerk.
I agree, we're lucky we're still getting this money, so I agree with that.
We are, absolutely. Counselor Dobrowski, the third member?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Madam Chair, please requalify.
We have a unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to approve the CDBG Budget Action Plan for year forty-five.
Thank you very much, Counselor, sir, the recommendation right on Communication ninety-four to adopt the CDBG program for year, fiscal year forty-five. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yea.
Counselor Fekley.
Yea.
Counselor Schelfer.
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication ninety-four has been adopted, thank you, and are granted. We're now move on to sixty-three dash nineteen, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, sixty-three nineteen, Repair Place Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for the Repair Place Inc., located at one hundred Commercial Road. We, this was on regular course at the last meeting. We have good standing certifications from the Treasury Collector's Office and the Police Department, so my recommendation would be to renew the second-hand dealer's license for Repair Place Inc., and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, you have the floor to Counselor Frida.
I agree.
Thank you, Counselor Dobrowski.
I agree.
Thank you, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President, we have unanimous recommendation to renew the second-hand dealer's license for Repair Place Inc.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Counselors heard the recommendation right to grant sixty-three dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, sixty-three dash nineteen has been granted. Madam Chair, thank you very much for your work and committee as well. We're now move on to Public Service, we have sixty-two dash nineteen. I'll yield the floor to the chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Sixty-two dash nineteen, National Grid and Verizon, New England Incorporated, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, along and across the following public way. National Grid to install one jointly-owned pole on Mill Street, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and thirty feet west of the center line of the intersection of Commercial Road. National Grid to install forty-feet CL-two JO wood pole, anchor guide for upgraded customer service. Further time is recommended because we have a hearing on July eighth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Counselors heard the recommendation right for further time, pending a hearing on sixty-two dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded to sixty-two dash nineteen, thank you, Madam Chair. We're now move on, there's nothing on the new business. We'll now move on to old business, we have a second reading of a loan order, Communication seventy-nine, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C-79, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the attached loan order for eleven million two hundred and ninety-four thousand be adopted for finance of an aeration basin and secondary clarifier project. We had the first reading of this adopted on June tenth. We had a public hearing this evening that was closed, I believe, and I suspect I have to read this again into the record, right?
Please.
City of Leominster and City Council ordered that eleven million two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of financing an aeration basin and secondary clarifier upgrade project, including without limitation all costs thereof, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount, issue bonds and notes therefore, under General Laws, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling legislation, and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the General Laws, that such bonds and notes shall be general obligations of the city unless the treasurer with the approval of the mayor determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section one of Chapter twenty-nine C, that the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, in connection therewith to enter into financing agreements and to our security agreements with the trust, and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and the mayor or the treasurer is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for this project and make all action, take, and make, and take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project in this vote. Any premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts